Yeah, I've done that before. Okay, folks, at 6:30 I call the April 21st meeting of the Planning Board to order, first on the agenda of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move table to minutes since our secretary is not here tonight.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close to state. Okay. We have on the agenda approval not required plans, and we have none of those tonight. And so we move on to continue public hearing. Applicant Nathan Ellis Highway LLC for a special permit to use a portion of the property located at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway for a waste disposal contractor in Friends, WDC. J.E. Landers-Cauli is the engineering firm. And as you know, it was continued from last time, and it is most likely going to be continued again this evening. We have two issues that are going to engender probably quite a lot of discussion, so I'm going to ask you to not be repetitive, to just please bring up any comments that are not a repetition and be concise in what you're saying. And I'm going to call on the applicant first because there were quite a number of questions that I believe they are prepared to answer. And we'll go to that first, then we'll go to the board, and then we will go to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Jeff Oppenheim. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. And I'm joined this evening by my partner, Jeff Nickerson, and next to him Carl Cavosa, who's the manager of Nathan Ellis Highway LLC and the owner of the Cavosa Companies that we're going to be discussing during this continuation hearing. And next to Carl is Kim McIntyre, who's an employee of the disposal company. Behind me is Jack Landers-Cauli, who is our civil and environmental engineer. As the board knows, the hearing was opened on April 7th, and it was continued to this evening. At the first hearing, there was lengthy submission that you received from a member of our community, and it was identified as environmental guidelines for composting. I would just like to draw your attention that those guidelines are a document that was produced and govern the government of Australia and does not have anything to do with our country. I ask that the board take notice of the origin of the document, as the regulators which produced it have no authority at all over this site in North Falmouth. After the first hearing, we answered, excuse me, in writing some 55 questions, and those were posed by the board and citizens. And I submitted a letter dated today, and I asked that that be submitted, that become part of the record. I'll attempt to review the primary areas of concerns raised by those questions, which were, again, raised by the board and also members of the community. I'm not going to go through each of the 55 questions. I've answered them in writing. They're in your file. If there's any question that I have not answered, I'm happy to hit upon it this evening. So, as the board's aware, there's a fair amount of concern from our neighbors about whether this site is suitable for compost, for composting food waste. So I think I would answer that as honestly and as openly as I possibly can, and that is that at our 2014 town meeting, upon the recommendation of this planning board, there were two things that happened that affected my client's site. Number one, this board recommended the site be changed from agricultural AA to LIC. Town meeting accepted that recommendation on town meeting floor. My client's site is now LIC. It is no longer agricultural AA as a result of town meeting action last fall. The second action that you took, which was also approved by town meeting, was to create a waste disposal contractor bylaw for LIC parcels greater than five acres. And that bylaw as well was supported by town meeting. And as the board knows, support means two-thirds vote, supermajority, for all zoning articles. Waste disposal contractor yards are only allowed by special permit by this board on five acres or more. Our site is 8.63 acres. This is the only site presently in the town of Falmouth that qualifies for this designation, meaning it's the only LIC site that is five acres or more. It's my opinion, and I hope you agree, that it was clear that town meeting vote, they had this site in mind as a potential location for this use. Obviously, they're leaving it in your discretion as to whether you grant a special permit. We think the site is suitable for a number of reasons. Its boundary, its southern boundary is a state highway, the Nathan Ellis Highway. Its northern boundary is land, open land owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Its eastern boundary is a large 200-foot-wide utility easement. It's not proximate to residential dwellings. Again, it's on 8.63 acres. Our nearest neighbors are on Cloverfield Road. That's east of the railroad line that runs past our property into the Mass Military Reservation. Citizens of Ballymead residents are on the opposite side of Route 28, and between their residences and this site are two large golf courses and some open space. So that really covers the general area, is this site suitable? The other area of concern, again, trying to aggregate the 55 questions into categories, is what is the volume of material that will be brought to the site? And there was some confusion, and I may have inadvertently added to the confusion, and for that I want to apologize to everyone. I misspoke. Our permit, a general permit from the DEP, allows a maximum of 30 tons of type 2 organic waste per day at the site, with a maximum per week of 105 tons of compostable material per week. I think I may have said 30 tons per week. And I would like to correct the record and make sure that the board and the community understands what our permit says. This is the smallest volume permit that the Department of Environmental Protection issues. It's important for the board to understand that. What is type 2 organic materials? It's vegetables, it's food materials, it's grass clippings, it's green plant material, it's fish waste, and manure. That's per our DEP regs. Now, the board should understand as well that we do not anticipate reaching the limits that our permit allows us to. It's a lot of volume, and we just don't think that we're going to be doing that sort of volume. Why are we doing this at all? Are we doing it to annoy our neighbors in Cloverfield Way and Ballymead? No, we're not doing that. We're doing that because last fall Commonwealth of Massachusetts decided that organizations that generate more than one ton of food waste on average a week must compost food waste. It's a must. Some of our waste clients fall into that category. Not a lot, but some. And they would be large restaurants, for example, hospital, larger organizations like that, perhaps Woods Hole Oceanographic. But I'm not even sure they fall into that category, because even if they're generating one ton during the summer months when they're very busy, it's much slower during the winter months. So we don't have, we don't believe we have, a lot of clients that fall into this category. But we want to offer them to pick up their food waste when we pick up as an adjunct to picking up their other waste. Some of the questions express concern about the volume. What happens if the volume grows? What happens if what I'm telling you now is not true a year or two years from now? What do we do? You know, this is our problem. We're contracted to pick up food waste. What do we do with the food waste? Well, we can take it to other food composters. We can sell it as an end product. Compost is an end product. We can go to our local pig farm and give it to them. We can move it to locations off of Cape Cod. I think you need to think about, I think we all need to start thinking about compost as a commodity. And we use it as part of, and I explained this two weeks ago, we use it to attenuate to our soils, to make the soils richer, to create different blends. But we can use it in its form as compost.
Jeff, I'm sorry, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
I don't know how deep down the hall people are.
About another 15 people on this.
Marley, what do you suggest?
Can you, let's call a recess for a minute.
Okay.
And let me see what I can do.
Let's see if we can get some additional chairs in here, because if they can't hear what's going on, that's not quite fair.
Absolutely.
So I'll call a recess for, what, five, 10 minutes? Okay.
You need some help?
I'm not sure.
She's probably going to see if she can get Bobby.
Yeah, more chairs.
At that point.
It was boatyard we could stack on.
Well, we'll manage. Okay, so I'm going to reconvene the meeting now, and thank you all for being patient. So Jeff?
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
If you didn't lose your train of thought.
So I was saying that the compost itself is a commodity, and you look upon it as a commodity, and, you know, it's supply and demand. If we have too much, we lower the price, and we sell it as such. So the concern about volume was a general concern raised by a number of people. The other area of general concern, I would characterize it as a concern about odor or So my response to that is that it's severalfold. Number one, my client works every day at the site, along with a number of people. There is no smell at the site, other than, you know, fresh dirt, if there is such a smell. He doesn't want to work in an atmosphere with a noxious odor. He doesn't want his neighbors to live in their homes with any sort of noxious odor. He will manage whatever you permit in the area of food waste in a responsible way, with Windrose, the way that we discussed two weeks ago, which I will not go over, but as part of the record. We have a plan to address if there is any odor. And this is not that complex a process. And it's a process that he's very familiar with, because he's been doing it for 20 years at the site. He's been doing it with organic materials, occasionally farm waste, and all he's asking to do now is to add the food waste, as we have described it to you. If you're properly composting, the odors are minimal. And the object is to properly compost, because if you're properly composting, you're getting the product that you want as quickly as you possibly can. And you control the odor by turning the composting material and by adding and covering it with wood chips. There was a general concern as to who controls what goes on at the site. It was a sort of a broad, I'm framing it in a broad way, but there were a lot of questions under that category. So to quickly review, our permit has been issued effective March 1st for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. As I said, for small composting operation of up to 30 tons a day, 105 tons a week. If it's not obvious, the second level of control is this board. Falmouth Planning Board issues a special permit, determines the conditions that you feel are reasonable for the waste disposal contractor, under the waste disposal contractor bylaw. Any public health issues are governed by our Board of Health, and we've been to see them informally, and I'll have, you know, a little bit more to say about that in a minute. And the enforcement arm of this board, and the Board of Health, I guess to some extent, is our building commissioner. He enforces the special permit conditions. So I want to emphasize, and I think I said it at the first hearing, but I do want to reemphasize it, our commitment to being a good neighbor to those in the area. It is not good business for my client or for anyone else to devalue his own property or to devalue the property of his neighbors. I said a moment ago, his neighbors, Ballymead across 28, I meant across Route 151. And I know a lot of them have expressed concern in writing, and I suspect many of the folks that are here this evening are from Ballymead. I'd like to just quickly review some of the changes to the site plan since we last met two weeks ago and provide you with the more dynamic way of understanding our site. So what additions have we shown here? We're showing, right here in this corner, very small, but it's a test well. And that test well has been cited by a groundwater hydrologist that he hired to tell us where to put that test well to test what's coming off of anything.
Closer to the right, please. Can't hear you. On TV.
I apologize. I'll repeat that. In this lower right-hand corner is where we would propose to site our test well. That site needs to be approved by the Board of Health, in addition by this planning board. And that would test the groundwater coming off of where the composting activity will be done, which is in this area. This area here is where we will store the wood chips. The wood chips are obviously in. and I suspect many of the folks that are here this evening are from Ballymead. I'd like to just quickly review some of the changes to the site plan since we last met two weeks ago, and provide you with the more dynamic way of understanding our site. I don't know if you can see this. I want to make sure the board can see it. So what additions have we shown here? We're showing, right here in this corner, very small, but it's a test well. And that test well has been sighted by a groundwater hydrologist that he hired to tell us where to put that test well to test what's coming off of.
Closer to the right, please. Can't hear you on TV.
I apologize. I'll repeat that. In this lower right-hand corner is the, where we would propose to site our test well. That site needs to be approved by the Board of Health, in addition by this planning board. And that would test the groundwater coming off of where the composting activity will be done, which is in this area. This area here is where we will store the woodchips. The woodchips are obviously integral to use in the compost pile. This shows a little spur in here, which we kept open in case we need to get fire apparatus in here. And there's also one up here, which is more on top of the pile. There's also an access road here that goes up a hill, and there's a T at the top for vehicle turnaround. This is the major utility easement that I discussed two weeks ago. This is a road that goes underneath the utility easement, all the way up as far as the utility easement runs. And it's used by the utility company. It's also used by the Mass Military Reservation, because they have test wells that they have run in this area to check on the plumes that are coming out of the base, and test the water periodically. And we'll be using that test data as part of our testing protocol on the site. Showing an area over here, which is an empty dumpster storage area. And this area over here is where we would propose to aggregate the cardboard. I'd like to submit this picture. It's a picture of the area that was put together so the board can see what it actually looks like on the site.
Which area is this?
That is the area where the cardboard will be aggregated. It's right here on the site. Three-sided concrete. And what we haven't done and won't do until we get permission from this board is to pour a concrete floor for that three-sided shelter. We also talked the last hearing about how the aggregated cardboard gets moved twice a week, on average, to market. And it gets moved in this 100-yard trailer, which is loaded on the site. So at this point, I would like to show how the...
Need to, chairs move, guys.
Yeah, I can move those.
Oh, you need this, yeah.
You two, first, back one row.
So I've submitted to the board a paper copy of what I'm going to show you on the screen. And hopefully, everyone in the audience will be able to see it. The board and the staff raised some questions about how the site is used. And this is our way of trying to explain the dynamic nature of the site. Okay, this green shaded area is the area on the site which is paved. And it has drainage structures on it. And that's probably where the vast amount of traffic is. As you recall, the waste disposal trucks are parked in this area, facing out. Everything else is a pervious surface. Next slide. The abbreviations are rather straightforward. CDC is Covosa Disposal Company, and CEX is the Excavating Company. The green areas represent the areas that are exclusively used by the disposal company, excuse me. Right here, there's a certain area here where dumpsters are, which are exclusively used by the disposal company. And over here again is the area where we will be aggregating the cardboard. The purple areas, this one is dumpsters, and this area as well is dumpsters. Really, there's overlap here. These dumpsters are used by both companies, both the excavation company and the disposal company. This area represents the loom and the area where there will be the windrows of compostable material. So there's overlap there, because some of that material is from the excavation business and some will be from the disposal business. Next slide, please. So the next four slides show the seasonality of the business. The key is obviously on the right, and I'll try to walk you through it. So in the spring, this area is smaller, because the dumpsters are going out to our customers who have been closed during the winter months. This is, this area here is unprocessed ABC. This area is processed ABC. And in here is fill, unscreened fill. And this area is screened fill.
Excuse me, would you mind just repeating, what is ABC for the audience?
Okay, asphalt, brick, and concrete. And that is processed to make a roadbase material, among other products. This area here is the area where, in the springtime, there will be loom and some compostable materials and windrows on top of the loom. And this area is unscreened loom at this point. And over here again, this white area is the woodchips. So what I hope to show you is how these areas change during the course of the seasons. This whole area here is dynamic. If you go on a day after we've sold a lot of loom, there may be no screened loom. If you go on a day where a lot of material came in from a job site, there may be more than I'm representing. So it's important that the board appreciates the ebb and flow of these various products. Because it's impossible to tell you it's going to be this size 12 months out of the year. I'm not going to, I'm not going to mislead you. It's not static. Next slide, please. So in the summer, you know, we would tend to have less dumpsters on site. We would have more processed ABC available for our customers. And over here, I guess it's slightly, well, it's, that pile is going down, because it's, there's a need for processed ABC. Over here is unscreened fill, again. I think that's slightly larger than the slide before. This pile is the screened loom, which is the product that is, you know, very desirable for landscapers and other contractors. This area, slightly bigger, showing more, more loom and more compostable material. And that's, we're anticipating that. Obviously, we have no idea how much on the food waste will be there. This purple area again is the unscreened, unscreened, screened. And here is the woodchips, which are used in the process. Next slide, fall. Again, the piles are not changing dramatically, but there is, you know, we're, again, we're trying to give you our best estimate of how this goes, okay? And this whole area, it remains dynamic. And lastly, the winter months. Winter months, you'll see that we have many dumpsters come back to the yard for the customers who have closed their operations, or who may want a smaller dumpster during the winter months, because they have less business. People are not buying loom during the winter months, so this area, we would anticipate to be larger. The compostable materials, we would anticipate to be a smaller percentage of this area. Remember, I explained that the windrows would be on top of probably several feet of loom in this area. And the way that works is they get turned and a new, they get flipped and placed into a new windrow to allow the process, the aerobic process, to take place. Again, woodchips down here. And I think that covers the annual cycle. So at the last hearing, I reviewed the requirements with you of 240, 216. And I'd like to very quickly just go through those before I close. The Planning Board must, under 240, 216, come to a written determination that the proposed use will not have an adverse effect, which overbalances its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood where the property is situated, or on the town. The Board must consider a number of factors. Whether the site is adequate in size for the use. We've discussed that. It meets your requirements of five acres. It's in fact 8.63 acres. Whether the site is suitable for the use. We also discussed that. We discussed the fact that it had been rezoned by town meeting on recommendation of this board. We talked about whether the impact on traffic flow and safety of the use will be detrimental to the neighborhood or town. You know the site is located on one of our major state roads, Route 151, which is on this side of our property. It has direct access to 151. No traffic passes through residential neighborhoods in order for our client to access his property. Whether there will be a negative impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. We talked about the fact, this property line is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There is no homes out here. The rail line is over here. Beyond the rail line is woods, and Cloverfield Road is in this general area. On this side is the Animal Hospital and boarding facility of Dr. DeLinx. Is there adequate sewage for the site? The sewage is done by two Title V septic systems, one for the office building here and one for the garage here, which I should have mentioned previously. These two structures serve both businesses, as offices and as a garage facility. Are there adequate utilities? There have been no problem with utilities at the site. We have a well here that produces 75 gallons per minute. You have to examine whether the use has a positive effect on the supply of affordable housing. I would submit to you it has no positive or negative effect on affordable housing. We do have a security apartment in the basement here, which is small and would rent for a price which would be within the affordable range. And whether the use complies with all applicable zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth. The use will comply with all the zoning requirements if you grant us a special permit consistent with our request. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I'm going to move on now to the board. Do you have any questions of Jeff that remain and that have been brought up with this presentation tonight?
I have one that I'd like to ask. It may not, I can't remember if it was answered before. The windrows that are going to be proposed for the composting, which way do they, would they go, and how long are they? I don't remember if that was discussed before or not.
Yeah, I did mention that, but I'm happy to go back to that. We envision them, I believe, running this way. And they will be separated by an area which would allow a piece of equipment to get in in order to do the turning. The size of the windrows, if you give me one minute, I can quickly tell you that. 16 feet wide, eight to 10 feet high.
How long would they be?
So the length would depend on the seasonality.
How many, how many windrows are projected to possibly be there? That's the only question I had, thank you.
So, Mr. Oppenheimer, what do you do in winter when the hospital food waste continues to pile up? How do you manage the composting? Can it still be done in the winter?
I believe it can be done, you know, year-round. I think the process is slowed down a bit by the cold weather. But I think it's going to be a year-round activity that we have. And, you know, we have the equipment, we have the heavy equipment to, you know, move snow, and we certainly have the equipment to move earth. And we, you know, there's, there's a dedicated piece of equipment. We go there, very large front-end loader that, you know, pretty much spends its day there. There's a gentleman who manages the yard. And there are more than one employee that answer to him in the activities that go on in this area.
So you don't anticipate a situation where it's just so cold and we can't really work the piles if they're frozen? But you have a contract with the hospital and the stuff keeps coming, and we end up with a big pile of food waste? I'm just curious how that would work.
Well, I think it's an excellent question. I think that there is still heat being generated by these, this process year-round. And, you know, we're, keep in mind, we're mixing it with leaves, grass clippings, you know, other green and brown materials and loom in that process. So it's not just like solid, frozen food.
So the combination of the daily activity and the heat generated, you think it'll be...
And the turning.
All right, thanks.
Has the Falmouth Fire Department weighed in on the water as far as its ability? 75 gallons, what was it, 75 gallons per minute?
The, I don't believe so, Mr. Leary. I don't believe that they have yet reviewed the plan. We're hoping that they will do it this week. I think staff was waiting for this revised plan in order, before they gave it to the fire safety officers to review. I will tell you that there are two hydrants in the general area. There's one at the end of, or on Cloverfield, which is over here. And there's one at the entrance of Ballymead. And the fire station, as you well know, in North Falmouth is less than two miles away. away. In addition, again, the equipment that we have on, on site is equipment that occasionally gets called into action by our fire department to help them fight fires. So we can, we can move a lot of material quickly with the equipment that we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Oppenheimer, you said that there were four plans that were required by the DP, the DEP, I believe, for odor control, animal control, contingency plan, and a toxic control. Is that right?
That's correct.
And that was from DEP?
They require that, yes.
Right.
And I filed them with, with your board.
Right. And I, and I read those. And those, those plans give very specific instructions on how to do all of those things. It's not just saying you've got to pull it out of and make it up yourself. They lead you through that.
Right, right.
Which I found very useful to me because it's not an open ended thing when it comes to odor control, animal control, have a contingency plan, and toxic control.
The DEP, yeah, wants those contingency plans in place in the event that there's a problem with, in any of those categories.
Right.
They are also available, Mr. Herbst, to us to give us advice, technical advice. And I suspect that that is the case because they're trying to encourage composting in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You know, you can't pass a regulation requiring businesses to compost material and then not have a place for those folks to go. So they're trying to facilitate it on some level.
Okay, so those four plans are required. Now, are you going to hire someone to draft those plans or are you, do you, is Mr. Cavosa capable of drafting those, and he and his staff capable of drafting those plans? And will, and will copies of those plans be available to the, our Department of Health and also this planning board?
We believe that we're capable of drafting those plans. In fact, we have drafted those plans. In fact, your board has a copy of the plan, and the Board of Health as well has a copy of the plans.
Oh, four plans?
All four plans.
All four plans.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm not aware that the planning board has copies of those.
Yes.
And I haven't reviewed them. And you draft, you and Mr. Cavosa and his staff drafted those plans using the DEP mandate as guideline, is that right?
Yes. And, and they were drafted by Mr. Cavosa and his staff. We reviewed them before they were submitted to you and to the Board of Health.
Okay, all right, thank you. My other question is, when you clean containers that you bring the food waste to the facility, I assume that the sides and the top and the bottom of those containers can be pretty nasty after a while, but I'm not sure. And when you clean those, will you be cleaning those with high pressure water? And then where will that runoff go?
Okay, well, we have, we have an area where we clean vehicles over here with tight tanks. So it could be cleaned in this area. The, or it could be cleaned over in this area. The water is, you know, generally a good thing in this process. And actually, as it relates to Mr. Brown's question about the snow, you know, the snow obviously at some point melts and it's part of the process. It also can serve as a means of holding the heat in. So it sort of serves tool function there. But yes, we clean periodically all of the receptacles that we use.
Right.
The dumpsters, the totes and all of that.
Okay, so when you clean those, I mean, it seems to me as though before it entered a catch basin or a, some kind of, in other words, your area up there where you say you clean vehicles, sorry, the water that, that leaves the vehicle or the container that's being cleaned, where does that water go?
It, periodically it gets removed by a clean and environmental company. It gets pumped out.
So it's captured in a tank?
It's a tight tank, yes.
Okay, okay. And then if you clean them on top of the composting area, obviously that would, that water would be absorbed by the compost.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yep. I've just been handed a note to, that the totes that I just mentioned, by and large, they stay on the property of the customer.
And the customer is responsible for cleaning them?
Yes, because we dump the waste into a rear load garbage truck.
Right.
And we don't take the tote with us, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, where you got the monitoring well that was sighted by the hydrologist, that's approximately 80 feet away from the composting area. And presumptively, that person computed the slope of the drainage of the water for the monitoring. In other words, how deep is that well? Where, where are you going to monitor for it?
Do we have information on the depth?
His recommendation was developed.
Yeah, just tell me. Ten feet into groundwater at this location, that was his recommendation.
Okay, and the groundwater is how deep there?
I can't tell you. Okay. Again, I want to emphasize that this is a proposed site.
Right.
Subject to approval by our Board of Health. And when we go to the Board of Health, the hydrologist will be with us to explain his rationale for placing the well there and the depth of the well and the testing protocol.
Okay, because I do have another question related to the underdrainment of the compost pile. Presumptively, they're concerned about the water quality and water escaping that may be contaminated. And I know that there is a pond over there, and I also know, not professionally, but because I've been related professionally for forty odd years.
Are you talking about this catchment area?
Uh huh, and sometimes those ponds create a diversion of the water. So I don't know whether there's been any determination as to the groundwater flow there at the depth and so on. In other words, I'm asking a question because of potential contaminants that leach into the groundwater and that might be running in a different direction.
Well, the groundwater flow is not that way, if that's the question. It is not north and west.
Okay.
That is not the groundwater flow in this area. I believe it is south and west.
Okay.
Okay? We have a well over here. The well is well out of the zone which would be affected by this area. Okay? And of course, the board is mindful that the groundwater in this area is being intensely studied by the US government. And there's an awful lot of data along this line here with wells that, and if you drive out there, you drive under the easement that goes up towards Bourne, you'll see test wells that are being monitored, you know, very religiously.
Madam Chair, for the record, Jeff Nicholson, I'd like to submit for the record this, which is part of a study about the base groundwater flows. This shows the approximate location and direction of the groundwater flow in the area.
Thank you.
It's perpendicular to these gradient lines.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions? Bob? No. No. Okay, now, I'm going to open it up to the public. And please be aware that we do have a folder here full of emails and letters that will have to be reviewed in regard to this whole proposal. And I'm going to also ask you to be very concise with your comments and/or your questions. And I would also ask you to not be repetitive, if at all possible. Please, when you have a question to ask or a comment to make, go up to the podium and state your name for the record. Now, is there anybody who wishes to ask a question or make a statement? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm Jim Postager. I live in Ballymead. My concerns, some of my concerns are hours of operation, noise control. I know we can hear just about anything up there. And so are there trucks backing up all hours of the day? A number of trucks that come in. For everyone to come in, it's got to go out. So how many, how much extra traffic is there going to be? And what's the impact going to have right now? We have a hard time with traffic. This can't help, so those are my concerns.
Okay, do you wish the applicant to comment if they have a comment to make on your concerns?
How about the hours of operation?
So I testified at the first hearing that the trucks that are involved in the Cavosa disposal operation will be starting to leave the yard around midnight. And the last truck will probably leave the latest by 5:00 AM. I explained to the, to the board and the public that the reason was that it's easiest to pick up these dumpsters when there's no traffic on the road and there's no activity around businesses. And also, the transfer stations that accept this garbage frequently close by the middle of the day. So we want to get in, get this waste out of our clients, our customers' properties and to a transfer station quickly. So the hours of operation, I would say, would be pretty much from midnight till, for the disposal business, probably eight or nine o'clock at the latest. Okay? The only reason it would run that late would be if there was an emergency and we had to run a second shift. Happens very rarely. What would cause us to do that would be, for instance, we know tomorrow we're going to get a foot of snow. And we won't be able to get to our customers tomorrow. So we might run, run a second shift, send the guys home, have them get some rest, and they go back out again, pick up the stuff. And, but that's very rare that that happens, you know, occasionally. As far as the truck traffic, we're on a state highway. Where the trucks that we're talking about, we're not, we're not adding trucks. There's truck traffic on that road at all hours of the night. There were comments by folks at Ballymead about, you know, getting in and out of Ballymead. I can't dispute the problems that they may have getting out onto Route 151, but I don't think it's fair to blame that problem on this site or any one site. It's a busy road. It gets busier in the summer, that's for sure. They're turning onto a state highway. And I can, you know, and the traffic is moving quickly. So I understand those issues, but I don't think it's an issue that you can put upon this applicant.
Are you planning on doing something about, like a turning lane or working with the state to cross the?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Questions need to be directed at the board, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can't.
All right, so the other, the other question is, I mean, is there going to be a traffic study? Are they going to find out whether, how badly the traffic's going to be affected by these trucks or by not having a turning lane?
You know, how many people want to make a comment or ask a question? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Seeing that, seeing that, what I'm going to do is like we did last time. I will have Mr. Oppenheimer take note of your questions and then answer them all at once. And I think that will lend greater efficiency.
Well, the only thing with that is, if this is on TV, a lot of people are watching this and I'm hearing the questions.
Can he come to the mic to speak?
Please, they will hear the questions, and then Mr. Oppenheimer, as he did before, will answer them all at one time. And that seemed to work. Remember, this is to be something beyond what was asked last time.
Yes.
Okay.
Tim Redden, Karen Ridge Road. This is procedurally, you have an answer to all the questions that were submitted by Mr. Oppenheimer today. We don't have, we don't have access to see the answers to all those questions. If we did, it might help prevent redundancy.
Redundancy.
Okay, so that's, that's number one.
Okay.
So I think that, so if you're, if Mr. Oppenheimer is, Mr. Oppenheimer is going to write the questions down and they're going to be answered in the future, I think you need to try to figure out how you get us the answers before we come to the next meeting.
I understand.
In fairness to us, you have all the information. In fairness to us, I think we need to know. We should be available to know what the answers are. Or, I guess, Mr. Oppenheimer should come here and answer all 55 questions.
Madam Chair, may I make a statement?
Sure.
Our intention for this was, Mr. Oppenheimer will take your questions now, and after everybody asks their questions, he will try to come up and answer them all tonight. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted?
I didn't get that, I didn't get that from, I thought we were going to, I thought we were going to do the same as we did the last time, write the questions down and then, and then come back and have them answered next week.
He answered a number of them last time, and a lot of those answers are the same in this letter. He put it down in writing. Bob?
Could I suggest that we read the questions?
That's what I'm wondering. It's going to take a long time, though, because this is eight ages.
Well, I'm a fast reader. Because, you know, the questions are pretty straightforward.
Straightforward. And please be aware that we just got this in our packet.
So I'll, I'll name the person that asked.
I did have an opportunity to read them this afternoon.
You did, okay.
I did.
All right, just, do we want to do that?
Um, I think that's, does the board want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Be a fast reader, Bob.
Okay, so the first set of questions were from the board, and they've been answered tonight. Peg Nicholson asked, is it correct that this is not a permit to be a transfer station? No, this is not a permit for a transfer station. This permit is limited to four activities: codwood aggregation, food waste composting, storage and maintenance of disposal vehicles, storage and maintenance of disposal containers. Is applicant allowed to store food waste? Yes, the applicant is allowed to store food waste based on the general permit from DEP which allows composting. Can the applicant transfer food waste? Does the applicant already have a permit to do that? The applicant is not transferring food waste. Food waste brought to the site is composted. Yes, the Department of Environmental Protection confirmed that effective March 1st, 2015, Cavosa Disposal Corporation has submitted the correct paperwork to DEP, the state agency, with authority to review and permit food waste composting to undertake food waste recycling. Where is all the waste disposal equipment now? The majority of the waste disposal equipment is owned by Cavosa and, but stored on customers' properties where it is utilized. Disposal vehicles and dumpsters are parked on the site where they are, when they are not operating in the field. Requested clarification about what vehicles are currently allowed and permitted. All vehicles associated with Cavosa Excavating are permitted on site as Cavosa Excavating is a contractor as defined by the Falmouth zoning bylaw. Some Cavosa disposal equipment is used by the excavation company for the demolition, demolition transport, sorting and disposal of demolition debris. What's happening now at the site? What's permitted now? The site is owned light industrial C, all by right uses in LIC districts are permitted on the site. The property is being operated as a contractor yet. How much food waste does the general DEP permit allow? The DEP composting permit allows no more than 105 tons per week with not more than 30 tons per day of Group II organic materials. Group II organic materials include vegetables, food material, grass clippings, green plant material, fish waste, and manure. How much food waste will the specific permit, will the special permit allow? The applicant asked if the planning board allowed composting at the site consistent with the DEP general permit, specifically no more than 105 tons per week of compostable material and no more than 30 tons per day of Group II organic materials. How will the food waste be measured? The waste will be measured by applying The waste will be measured by applying conversion factor approved by DEP. To whom will food waste activity be reported? The Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Who will enforce the limit on food waste? Mass Department of Environmental Protection. What happens when there's too much food waste for the amount of loam? Food waste will not be mixed with loam. Compost is mixed with loam. Last year, the applicant sold approximately 20,000 cubic yards of loam. The compost and loam can be mixed to yield a custom blend. If there is too much compost, it can be sold as an end product, for example, as a subsoil under loam. If there is too much food waste, it can be brought to a big way, big farm as food or transported to other facilities for composting. The applicant does not expect to have a great volume, but wants to offer this service to his MSW clients who must recycle or want to recycle food serve, food waste. What will the applicant do with the compost? Compost is a commodity that will be stored, mixed accordingly to make custom soils or to sell as an end product. The applicant has the ability to adjust the price to move more material at any time. How high is the berm at the front of the property? Approximately 10 feet from the surface of Route 151. What will be visible from the road? What has been visible from the road will remain the same as exists at present. The applicant has received several awards from the Falmouth Beautification Council and wants to maintain its status as well as presented, as a well-presented local company. There will be no aesthetic changes to the front of the property, the height of the loam pile, or the size of the berms. Will there be odor, how much odor? During the process of composting, odors are evident for a limited amount of time when the woodrow is turned. The applicant has been composting organic material for 20 years on-site, and in all that time has never received a single odor complaint. The applicant also never received an odor complaint from employees or customers at the applicant's office at the site. Who is the enforcement agency and what do they do? Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has jurisdiction over composting operations. They will ensure that the operation is consistent with the requirements which they establish through their regulatory framework. In Falmouth, the Board of Health has jurisdiction over all health-related matters. Virginia Vayal, last. Cardboard during transport, there is the potential for a litter event. Cardboard could also escape from the property. What will be done to prevent this? A, cardboard comes into the site, enclosed containers, and shipped to market in covered 100-yard trailers. Cardboard is a commodity which will be controlled on-site. This will be done by placing all cardboard in a three-sided bunker to limit distribution of the material on-site. Cardboard will be removed twice a week and more frequently if necessary to be delivered to market. The applicant has been operating on the site for 20 years. The applicant has received several awards. Okay, we've heard that. The applicant made a large investment planting and building the berm and spends thousands of dollars per year on landscaping. Okay. Can this, can this well actually support the proposed operation in case of fire? At 75 gallons per minute, the well on the property exceeds normal residential operation. The applicant also has access for a pump truck. The site is located less than two miles from the North Falmouth Fire Station, is in close proximity to a fire hydrant at the entrance of Ballamette as well as a hydrant on Flowfield Way. Drainage is a concern. There is a vernal pool at the back of the site. The natural flow of the site is to this area. There is no vernal pool at the site. Permit, how much material can be brought in? Cardboard is an exempt material, not subject to DEP limitations as a recycled material. Food waste composting will be undertaken consistent with the DEP general permit in place. Tim Redden. Will only trucks that are part of the Cavosa business be parked on this property? Cavosa Disposal will be the only waste disposal contractor at this site. At some point in time, could trucks from a competitor that might want to use Cavosa's disposal property be allowed to park there? Cavosa Disposal will be the only waste disposal contractor at this site. Will dumpsters be the only part of the Cavosa operation, or will they be expanded, expanded over time to other entities? Cavosa Disposal will be the only waste disposal contractor at this site. Cavosa Excavating operates at the site, and a component of Cavosa Excavating's business includes the use of dumpsters and removal of construction demolition debris. Cardboard operation. Will it only be brought back to the property from current Cavosa accounts, or could it include the, include the opportunities for other companies to bring their cardboard back to this facility? Cardboard is a commodity that is not registered by the DEP. Most waste disposal companies transfer cardboard at their own properties. Composting, will it just be material being brought back from Cavosa accounts, or will this facility be able to accept compostable material from other companies that do business in the area? Cavosa Disposal will be the main waste disposal contractor at this site. The applicant is a reputable contractor, okay, we know 20 years, as well as other entities that are located where com... Let's see. The applicant would like to extend the opportunity to do business with local companies that have a need for this service, as well as other entities that are located where composting is not allowed. The applicant will operate consistent with the DEP permit and the special permit issued by the planning board. If this operation can accept 30 tons per week, will it expand beyond the boundary? The permit issued by DEP allows up to 105 tons per week with not more than 30 tons per day of Group II organic material. Okay, we know what that is. The applicant will operate consistent with the DEP permit. Matt McNamara. What is the number of vehicles, equipment, and dumpsters that were permitted under the contractor's yard, and what is the increase that is being requested through this permit? The special permit, which was amended several times, is attached as Exhibit 35. The special permit defines the permitted uses of the property as an agriculturally-zoned parcel, AGAA. The zoning for this parcel was changed to LIC at the annual 2014 town meeting. Ultimately, the applicant would request that 15 dedicated waste disposal vehicles be allowed to be parked, serviced, and maintained at the site. What is the amount of acreage that was permitted at this parcel under the contractor's yard? And what is the addition of, if any, being requested now? The special permit at Exhibit 35 indicates that the entire site, which is 8.63 acres in size, was governed by the special permit under the former's owning designation. At 2014 ATM, this parcel was changed to LIC zoning, which means contract is used by right on the entire site. Less than one acre of the site will be dedicated to waste disposal contractor use. Some portions of the site, specifically the empty dumpsters, storage areas, could be used by both Cavosa Disposal for waste disposal purpose and Cavosa Excavating building contractors use. Will the conditions of the existing special permit still apply? The purpose of the prior special permit was to permit contractor use in agricultural AA property. Now, by the redesignation of the parcel as LIC property at the 2014 town meeting, contractor use as defined in the bylaw is permitted by right. There are several elements of the prior special permit which the applicant will retain, which relate to conditions at the site which were allowed pursuant to the special permit, which, based on current zoning, are pre-existing non-conforming uses, specifically security apartment, parking within the 75-foot yard setback, asphalt brick, and concrete recycling. Maureen Hollowhawks. Does the rezoning of potential, potential special permit null and void the conditions of the existing permit? All by right uses in LIC zones are permitted at the site. Special permit uses in LIC zones are permitted at the site by special permit. Can Mr. Cavosa dump and pile cardboard there now? Yes, cardboard recycling is an exempt activity under DEP regulations. The current special permit application would allow transfer and storage of cardboard under Falmouth zoning bylaws. How and where are the trucks and dumpsters being washed? What chemicals does the applicant use? There's a vehicle washing pad in the northwest corner of the site with right, with tight tanks, which have been routinely inspected by the Massachusetts DEP and which are pumped and maintained by Boston Green. Will water runoff be contained and treated? The tight tanks referenced above are designed to prevent runoff of water from vehicle washing. Most of the site is a pervious surface. On the portion of the site which is paved, drainage structures exist to contain runoff. Is there going to be a baseline groundwater quality test prior to the site being used for composting, storing, and transferring garbage? A hydrology test should be done before, if this permit is issued. Dr. John Blout, a hydrologist, is being retained to evaluate groundwater impacts and to site a test well at the request of the Board of Health. Will permanent bounds be installed to delineate the areas that are, that they are talking about using? No, this is a fluid site, and the areas shown on the plan are approximations only. A fair amount of site is not paved, therefore delineation of exclusive use areas is difficult. How often will the water testing be done and by whom? Water testing will occur consistent with Board of Health requirements. What happens to the end product of composting? Compost is mixed with loam and then sold wholesale to contractors in our communities for use at building sites. Compost can also be sold as an end product. Will there be local and/or state site visits on a regular basis to make sure everything is in compliance? The building commissioner is the, the building commission is the Town of Falmouth zoning enforcement officer. The Department of Environmental Protection has enforcement authority under their regulations. Will there be a wired road and control policy in place? Plans required by DEP regulate regarding animal and vector control are in place. Will there be a traffic lane to allow eastbound vehicles to go by a stop truck turning onto the site? No, there is no expected increase in traffic to the site. The applicant has no authority to modify Route 151, which is a state highway. In 2002, Mr. Cavosa said he would put up signs saying caution trucks entering. Why would these never install? The state which owns and controls Route 151 prohibited the installation of any private signs. Can the applicant use the whole five acres at some point in the future or just a certain area? Areas which will be dedicated to the waste disposal contractor will you, will be identified on the site plan. The wildlife carter, is it on the plan? Is it a state wildlife carter? The wildlife carter shown on, shown on the prior special permit was not a state wildlife carter. The Falmouth Department of Natural Resources requested that the planning board incorporate a wildlife carter in the special permit as a condition of the special permit. A copy of the 1998 special permit, which required the wildlife carter, is attached as Exhibit 53. What will the operating hours be? Waste disposal trucks will leave the site starting at midnight. Most trucks will have departed the site by 5:00 a.m., assuming normal operations. In emergencies, where there could be trucks departing at times other than the midnight to 5:00 a.m. routine departure time. Concern about shutting off the backup alarms. Ms. Hollowhawks stated that she called the DOT and was told that shutting off the alarms is not allowed. The applicant's consultant has advised the applicant that at night flashing lights may be utilized in lieu of backup alarms. This practice is consistent with state and federal requirements.
Okay. I'm hoping that this long reading here, and thank you, Bob, very much.
I feel like Ted Cruz.
Will perhaps do away with some of the questions that were going to be asked. I'm hoping they were answered in this.
Good evening. I'm Steve Perry from Casman Edwards. I represent the Ballamette Property Owners Association. And I'm speaking here in opposition to one of the four requests that were made, which is the request for the composting at this site. And Mr. Oppenheim had said that that request was not made just to annoy his neighbors, and I want to reiterate or say the same thing. We're not opposing this just to annoy our neighbor, but because there are real concerns about how this is going to affect them and, and the area. There was some talk about the town meeting and how this was now a use that can be allowed by special permit in this zone. So I just want to touch on the history of how that happened. There was an application before this board, as you all recall, in May, where Mr. Cavosa sought to legalize a use he was already using, doing at the premises with respect to his waste disposal business. Ultimately, this board decided that it did not have the power to grant him a special permit to do what he'd been doing for many years. And a request was made to rezone the property to basically allow what he was doing. And there was an advertisement of a proposed change, which was to have a transfer station at the premises and to allow waste disposal use there. And that was what was advertised, and that's what, for example, Ballamette learned about at the time. In the course of the planning board meetings, there was some discussion at a meeting by this board on October 7th, 2014, about composting. And at that time, Mr. Cavosa said that he was already composting at the site, and the board asked, well, what are you doing there? And Mr. Oppenheim said that he was doing some composting with grass clippings and wood chips. I mention that because there's been a lot of talk in today, and any questions and answers about Mr. Cavosa's extensive 20-year experience with composting. But what he told the board on October 7th was, he did some grass clippings and wood chips. And wood chips, of course, are Class I, not a, not a Class II organic material. They're not offensive. And grass clippings are not food waste. And also, there was, there's never been composting at this site of the magnitude that's being asked for here, which is up to 105 tons a week. At town meeting, the focus was primarily on whether a transfer station should be allowed. Mr. Cavosa got up and talked about how all the waste would be enclosed for the transfer station, and there wouldn't be odors. And there was virtually no discussion of composting. It came up. There was a brief mention of it. As you probably recall, debate was cut short. There was a vote. And there really wasn't a determination at town meeting that, yes, we should allow 105 tons of smelly fish and other food waste at this site. That just wasn't done. That's up to the board. And you had, when you had your meetings in October 2014, emphasized the need to go through a special permit process. So the idea that this is some kind of fait accompli because town meeting rezoned it to allow composting materials at the site is not a basis for finding that you can now have 30 tons a day of this kind of organic waste. You have to look at it, and you have to decide, is this a suitable site? After the meeting last week, when, two weeks ago, when our client first learned that the application for waste disposal use actually meant a composting facility, contacted council. We hurriedly tried to review the issues, and we did some research on what these facilities are like and what kinds of guidelines ought to apply when you're trying to cite them. And I want to share some of that with you, if I may. The presentation that's been made talks about odors being transient, only when you turn the windrows, not a big problem. I think the phrase was, it's not rocket science. Tonight, it was said that this is not complex. But that is not at all what all the studies about these facilities say. And I'll start with this one. I have, I think, seven copies. I hope that's, okay, can I approach?
I ask, you said you had seven copies, you think. One of our members is not here tonight, so I will have that put in our file. Okay?
Thank you.
This first, this first handout I've given you is from California. They've had a lot of experience on the West Coast with these kinds of facilities, California, Washington. They've been a little ahead of the game, and so they've also had experience with odor. So this first report is called "A Comprehensive Compost Odor Response Project." And I wanted to start with, and these are excerpts. I didn't want to give you the 150-page document.
Thank you.
So if you look at the page that's number three entitled Introduction, you'll see that it talks about odor as the critical issue for composting. It's called "Composting's Achilles' heel." And if you look at the second paragraph, it dispels a myth that if you run a composting facility properly, there won't be odor. And what it says is that odors from composting facilities are inevitable. They're part of the process. And even well-managed facilities have odors. And if you skip down to pages 19 and 20, there's talk about what chemical compounds are responsible for odors. And then I'd like to direct you to page 21, just go over this chart with you. And this is a chart of the odorous compounds that are released during handling and decomposition of organic materials, namely during composting. There's different groupings. First, you have the volatile sulfur compounds, and there's a list of six chemicals that are released during composting. And the smells: rotten egg, pungent rotten cabbage, rotten cabbage leek-like, disagreeably sweet rotten pumpkin, sulfurous rotten cabbage, putrid sulfurous. That's the volatile sulfur compounds. Then you get to the volatile nitrogen compounds. An ammonia, ammonia is released during processing, pungent, sharp irritating. The next one, putrescine, is putrid and nauseating. Cataverine, putrid decaying flesh. Methylamine, putrid fishy rotten fish odors. Dimethylamine, fishing, fishy rotten fish. And another one, fishy pungent. Ethylamine, ammonia-like irritating. And the next two are fecal nauseating. And then, then you have the volatile fatty acids, which of course come with food waste in particular. And those acids are biting, pungent, vinegar-like pungent, rancid, pungent, rancid butter, body odor, unpleasant, like sweat. Additional ones smell like rancid cheeses or otherwise unpleasant and offensive on the next page. And the list goes on. And these are the chemicals that you get from composting, and those are the odors associated with it. So it is an important issue to try to manage these odors. So it is an important issue to try to manage these odors and to site these facilities in a place where you don't have what the environmental folks call receptors. So receptors are people who can smell them. And here, you have residences on Cloverfield that, with the new sighting, the closest residence, I think, is 300 to 400 feet away, 170 Cloverfield. Not very far. You can look at a map. It's pretty close to where that's being sighted. The other closest of butter is on Falmouth Woods Road. There's a house that's not depicted. I understand they didn't get notice originally of the hearing even, but it's sort of across the street from where the composting would be, right at the corner of 151 and Falmouth Woods Road. That used to be a sales office, and now it's a residence. So those are the closest residences. Then you have golf courses. You have holes on the golf courses that are nearby on 151 to the road. And the other thing you have is the road itself with people driving in town, perhaps in traffic. And you're going to have odor because you're only 75 feet from the composting site shown on the latest depiction. The next document I wanted to share with the board is another study, which is called "Odor in Commercial-Scale Compost: Literature Review and Critical Analysis." This one's from the Washington State University Department of Ecology, and it's dated October 17th, 2013.
Thank you.
And this document discusses odor in commercial composting operations and talks about controls that include air quality control equipment, things such as pre-processing of the wastes, different additives you can try to use to prevent odors, none of which are part of the odor control plan submitted to this board. And what it says in the introductory pages is that these controls all involve, quote, "greater levels of complexity, control, and training for personnel, as well as increased capital and operating costs." And here, we've been told that it's not complex, and we don't have that kind of proposal to invest capital to use best management practices. This particular applicant's plan is to turn the windrows and adjust the moisture, and that's really the extent of the odor control plan that was submitted. And it doesn't take into account any of the technologies and advancements that people who have been trying to deal with these plants and deal with their odors have developed. At page four of this document, it mentions that moisture is a problem in rainy areas. This is a report out of Washington, which is thought to be a place with a lot of rain. So I looked at the average rainfall in Seattle, and it was 38 inches a year. And then I looked at Falmouth, and it said 46. So you're going to have a lot of rain, and the problem is that you really can't control the moisture level in your compost pile necessarily if it's rainy, according to these documents. I'm no expert. The report emphasizes that when you talk about odor, that the biggest part of the odor problem, and this is at page nine, is the outside handling of waste. So a lot of compost facilities are using newer technologies where they're enclosed or covered. That includes anaerobic processes. And this is outside, and that's where you get the odor problems. Another thing that the report mentions is that a lot of the odor problem is that you're bringing onto the site materials that have already started to rot. And so you have to think about, well, how are the materials getting to this place? How long have they been sitting in a customer's container before they're picked up? They're not all coming from Mr. Cavosa's company, apparently. We're going to have, he said in the questions and answers that he would welcome waste from other contractors. That was just read tonight. I think I'm correct in saying that there was a specific question whether Mr. Cavosa would limit the delivery to his own, and he said, no, I would welcome the opportunity for others.
I heard something different. I didn't hear that. I heard he'd bring new customers, but not other contractors, is the word you used. I thought he...
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm mistaken.
Well, one of us is, and it could be me, but I believe, and I read these when they were provided earlier, that it said that he would allow other contractors, including places where they couldn't do the composting, to bring them there. And it was sort of contradictory for another answer, which is why you might, Mr. Fox, you might have thought otherwise. There were two, there was one, he said he'd be the only contractor at the site, but then later in another question that was asked, he said, yes, I would allow other contractors to use this for composting. Here's my partner, Mr. Dunn, and I think it's... Question 35A. Cavosa disposal will be the main waste disposal contractor at this site. The applicant would like to extend the opportunity to do business with local companies that have a need for this service, as well as other entities that are located where composting is, composting is not allowed. So I suppose that could mean...
That's what I heard.
That could mean other...
That's what I heard.
New customers is what you mean. Okay.
That's what I heard.
Yes, okay. So I understand correctly. I understood that differently, the way it was worded. But in any event, he's expanding the operation to customers he doesn't currently have who want to get rid of their compost. And therefore, you have longer distances and more issues with food that will have rotted before it comes to the site. The document I handed out has best practices for composting sites, and page 16, suggested best management practices. They talk about, importantly, a setback, and this is also in the text of the document, of 2,000 to 3,500 feet is the suggested setback from residences and receptors. And of course, we don't have anything like that. Talks about complex realtime monitoring, many parameters, and feedback as being best practices. Talks about aeration, machine-driven aeration, and other methods that aren't used in this application. And the third and last handout I have of this type, I have a couple of things to show you, is on air emissions and health from the Cornell Waste Management Institute. And this document is summarizing studies that have been done that indicate that volatile compounds leave the site and can have adverse health effects. And interestingly enough, it's not necessarily detectable. It's a different issue from the odor. You can have harmful compounds leaving that you don't smell. You could have odors that you do. The distance, fortunately, the emissions disperse with distance, and I think it's quadratic, so the farther you go, it's, if you go twice as far, it's one quarter of the amount. But they do recommend up to 1,640 feet as a distance within which you could have elevated levels of these dangerous compounds. I don't want to spend your time reviewing all of this document, but they indicate that aerosols are present for at least 200 meters, which is over 600 feet. Odors are present within 500 meters, which is 1,500 feet. And they say there should be a presumption of at least 700 feet from any dwelling in citing these, in this set of studies. So I want to go back to the criteria for reviewing this kind of project and just comment on that briefly. One issue is whether the site is large enough for the use. And I understand it's an eight-acre site. However, we have a cell phone tower, we have dumpsters, we have gravel, we have boulders. Most of this site is doing other things. And the amount on this diagram, that's for the composting, is around a half acre. And so we have to look at, how does that half acre accommodate the amount of compost that is being proposed in this application? And I came in today thinking that we were talking about 30 tons a week, because Mr. Oppenheim had said that at the last meeting, but that was a mistake. And they are looking for the 30 tons a day not to exceed 105 tons a week that the DEP allows in its general permits. And I need to mention on this point that I think you all understand the DEP process for somebody seeking this kind of permit is they just fill out an application such as you have in front of you, where they self-certify their compliance. The DEP is not vetting it. They're not looking at whether this person has the expertise or qualifications to do it. They're not looking at who the neighbors are. They're not looking at whether it's a suitable location. It's basically a rubber stamp on a self-certification, and then every year you have to certify that you're not causing a nuisance. So it's a self-certification, and it's not very much policed. And perhaps if there's a problem and somebody contacts them, they may or not, depending on their resources, address it. But they are not making a determination that this particular site is appropriate one way or the other. And I don't think Mr. Oppenheim would disagree with that. It's just a, I think he said it himself, it's a self-certification. You fill out a check-the-box type of application. They don't look at your odor control plan. They don't look at your vector control plan. They just say you have to have one. And the ones we got were very general and vague and not very persuasive, as I think you'll see when you read them. Now, I was trying to figure out, well, how much space will all this waste take? So we had to apply some conversion factors. I'm going to hand out my calculations, which I think are accurate, obviously the applicant The reason it's a little difficult to do these, to figure this out, is that sometimes there's talk of tons, and sometimes there's talk of cubic yards of waste, and you have to convert one to the other. So the question is, how much does a cubic yard of food waste weigh? And most of the sources I saw referred to around 1,000 pounds for a cubic yard of commercial food waste anyway. And it seems like residential food waste may be a little lighter and take up more space and be more porous. So, and I have an EPA study that talks about 500 to 1,000 pounds per cubic yard. So I use those on this calculation to see how much space we're talking about. If you have, one cubic yard of food waste equals 500 to 1,000 pounds per the EPA, then one ton of food waste is two to four cubic yards. And from there, you say 90 days of food waste, that's about 13 weeks. If you went at the 105 tons per week maximum, that's 1365 tons, and that would be, as I say here, 2,700 to 5,400 cubic yards of food waste. Now, the thing is that you cannot have that, food waste cannot be more than 25% of your compost pile. So for cubic yards, whatever the food waste is, you have to multiply by four to get the total compost, because you're adding things to it. And that's where I get the figure on here of 10,000 to 21,000 cubic yards of compost if you were to grant the permit and it was pursued to the maximum. And what we have is a revised plan today that shows about 20,000 square feet. So that's around 2,200 square yards. And that means you'd be, if you were to cover the entire area with compost and have no room to turn it or anything, you're talking about piles that are 15 to 30 feet high. So that area is not big enough to accommodate the amount of compost that's being sought. That's really the point. And the DEP does have a guideline on, an additional guideline on maximum capacity. And that is that you cannot have more than 5,000 cubic yards of compost, and that's including the good stuff and the bad stuff, the whole pile. Can't be more than 5,000 cubic yards per acre of your composting operation. Now, they don't mean that you count buildings and things over there. They're talking about the compost operation. So if you had a half acre, it seems like you'd be looking at a 2,500 cubic yard maximum. And the permit that's being requested here is so much beyond that. So we do have concerns about what's being asked for in that regard. And I said I would turn to the rest. That's the first thing, is the site big enough? I think that the composting area depicted is not big enough for the amount of waste that's being proposed. Too dense, and that's a problem. The effect on traffic, well, traffic's already bad. This is going to make it worse. There was a comment at town meeting that there was a deceleration lane, but in fact there's not, and really can't be because of the railroad bridge. And so there's a little bit of a, if you go out, there's a little bit of a, something in the shoulder there, but it's not enough for trucks to really pull over and slow As far as the suitability of the site and the adverse impact on the neighborhood, we have adjoining properties that are used for recreational purposes close by. We have some residences that are quite close, as I indicated on Cloverfield and the one on Falmouth Woods. My clients are further back, but their property extends out to this area. And they're very concerned about driving down this road and smelling 75 feet away the odors from this facility. How will that affect their property values? How would any of you feel if that kind of a facility were across the street from the entrance to your house? Would that be something you'd want to live with? So that's really the concern there, that this kind of facility inevitably produces odors. The applicant seems to believe that that's not an issue. I think maybe he's misinformed, and that's a concern, because what you see in these articles is that you have to really do a lot of work to manage these, and even then, they smell. And here, we have somebody who doesn't have training or experience. In the questions and answers, there's a question, what expertise does Mr. Cavosa have? And the answer that was given is twofold. One, the DEP approved his application. Well, they told you that's check-the-box, they approve it. And two, he'd been composting at the facility, he says, for 20 years, but Mr. Oppenheim said that was grass clippings and wood chips. And it wasn't 30 tons a day, and it wasn't 105 tons a week. So we understand it's well-intentioned. We understand it's important to have composting, but this is not a suitable location for it, and it's going to create a nuisance, and it's going to create a lot of controversy in town, upset a lot of people when they're smelling this driving by or smelling it in their homes. And you know, the winds go in every which direction. They're not always going to come from the south. So we ask you to deny that part of the application, that request a composting facility at this location.
Thank you for your presentation and the materials that you submitted.
I have a question for Mr. Perry.
Say it.
Excuse me. Mr. Perry, before you go...
Mr. Perry, could you stay there? I have a question for you.
So I noticed in this first handout, the first thing that I started reading at the introduction to the summary, this is setbacks for large scale. Could you tell me what a large-scale facility would be?
You know, I could not see what these, I could not see any definition of large scale or small scale. I think this is considered to be a medium-scale plant, and I was trying hard to find literature that talks about it. I think the principles are the same, but what you would find is the bigger, the more compost you have in a smaller area, the more odor there is. So for example, there was someplace in Delaware where they were taking compost from everywhere in the Northeast, and you could smell it for miles, and they had to shut it down. So there's a lot of literature about places where you can smell it for miles, and those are the large-scale plants. When you've got a smaller-scale plant, I don't think you're talking miles, but I think you're talking thousands of feet, especially with prevailing winds. But it's very hard to tell. And my concern is that you're going to approve this, and it's going to smell from time to time, and there won't be anything anybody can do about it. Because I don't think that if you're sitting there and you have a big whiff, I don't know that that's going to be enough to shut it down.
I understand the concept. I'm just...
Yeah. No, and that's a very good question, because I think you'll find that... No, and that's a very good question because I think you'll find that some of these experiences were with larger plants where if you go on the internet and look at issues with composting facilities, they include farms and smaller places. They're not all massive at all and the process is...
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marlene, we've got another, we're going to continue this. We have another issue that we have to bring up tonight. What would you recommend?
That, it's up to the board. You need to...
I think we have people here.
I know we have people here.
And I think we need, if there's anything new that hasn't been brought up, this, we've got to give them the time to do it.
Okay, then we're going to limit this to something new and be quick about it. Sir, you in the back.
How you doing? George Stanborn, Carnridge Road. I wanted to expand on this question of distance. I would encourage anybody to please look up the regulations, CMR 16.00, oh four. It's very clear under that state regulation that adjacent areas are defined by the state as properties within a half mile radius. It is not a butters. It's a half mile and the issue is odors and rodents. I don't, I imagine there's a number of people in here who are gardeners and those who do their own composting, I'm sure, as I stand here, you don't put meat scraps or food scraps for one reason. It attracts rats, mice, and rodents.
Thank you.
I'm Austin Heath. I live in Paddock Circle in East Falmouth. I'm also a town meeting member. I want to make a statement on the town meeting and the vote that was taken. Town meeting votes for a variety of reasons. Most of the people tend to follow the recommendation of the finance committee, board of selectmen, and the planning board. This article was recommended by them. It only passed by rounding up. And another reason that people voted for it was Carl Cavosa is well-known in this town. He's done a lot of good things for the town. But he presented a program that was a very small transfer station. And in response to questions from Cloverfield people in particular about rats and odors, he made the point that this was a transfer station. It was only to transfer material from one vehicle to consolidate it and bring it to wherever it was going to go. He said that these materials did not stay on site. It passed. On the other hand, what he asked for is not what he's asking for now. This is food waste. I'm old. I still call it garbage and where you put it is a dump. He's got a garbage dump that he wants to put on 151.
Please stop.
If he had proposed a garbage dump on 151, it never would have passed. That if you are going to issue a permit, it should only be what he presented in town meeting, not this expanded, refuse this stays on site. Secondly, I read in the Falmouth Enterprise that he has thought of moving his excavating operation across the street. I don't know if he's got a deal on that or not.
That's not germane to what...
Well, it would make the whole eight acres available for processing. But basically, this isn't what town meeting voted for. It isn't what they contemplated and I would think any town meeting member would be disturbed. I wish you'd just take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to clarify that? That was the LIC.
Well, what was passed in town meeting is that compostable materials, commercial organic material and compostable bulky wastes may be brought to the site and composted on site. So that's the words of the change in the zoning, the LIC zoning.
Good evening. Charlie Passios represents the Golf Club of Cape Cod, which is just south of the property across 151. Thank you for reading the questions and answers that answered a lot of the questions I had for tonight, so I can forego those. The one question I do have, in the event that this special permit is granted, does this board or some other agency put conditions on the property with regard to if in fact odors do transfer to an area? Are there controls put in place that it cease and desist until remedies can be put in place and it's corrected? Reason being, before you answer, reason being is, we're in the golf industry and everybody knows that the golf industry is a completely depressed industry over the last 20 years. We're a new club. We're eight years old. We're growing. We're growing slowly. But I will tell you that if we end up in a situation with odors traveling across the street, we have golf holes that are well within the distances that everybody's been explaining today, not to mention a clubhouse that has a food business. So if, coming from agriculture, I know that composting generates, flies generates in the process of breakdown. There are maggots, so that's the larvae to flies, the rodents, the whole issue. We just can't have, for us, a business affecting another business. You know, we support Carl 100%. He, you know, we work with him, we do business with him. We don't have any problem with any of the other activities that he has and historical activities even, but adding food to the composting system is going to change the whole dynamic on that property.
Okay, the answer to your question is yes, a special permit gives us broad latitude to put controls in.
Thank you.
Good evening, manager and planning board, Maureen Harlow-Hawks, and I know Doc Rowe, West Falmouth. I do appreciate that a lot of the questions were answered. It would, I did come down to look at the file. I don't have the luxury to come three or four times a day. I only came twice and I did not get the opportunity to read those, so thank you for reading those to the public. I did get the new plan, the site plan, which was brought in late in the afternoon. And one of the concerns that I have in any hearing like this that is pretty much well-attended, when plans are brought at the day of the hearing, it makes it very difficult and that's why we're all here. And it becomes very laborious when we all are here because we have to all listen to this. If the stuff was submitted the week before, this hearing has been continued for two weeks because we had town meeting, the fun-filled week of that, and now we have this brand-new information that Mr. Oppenheim brought today, including the map, so here we all are. And a lot of this could have been, we would not be here tonight, or as many of us. The plan, I have a question with. On this plan, I know Mr. Oppenheim was quite impressed with his two stamps at the last hearing, and I only see one stamp. I don't see a PLS stamp. And to do bounds, I think you need one, so I hope we get one with the two good stamps on it again. The other thing is that the vernal pool, which is in question, it was maybe one, but now it's a containment catch basin, is not shown on the plan. And if anybody has seen Google Earth, it is quite large, it is quite green, and it is quite dead. All of the property in that corner by the buildings where he washes the trucks, all goes in there. We're watching monitoring wells for the windrows, but there should be some monitoring of that pond. It is, or vernal pool or containment basin with no surround around it so kids can fall in it. It's beyond his property line, so, and it has expanded beyond his property line with a very perfect curve. So I think that should be on the plan to make it indicative that it does exist. The wildlife corridor was on a plan. It should still continue to be on this plan. It was put on by the Falmouth DNR and it just doesn't disappear. The third thing, uh, fourth thing, there's no contours on this map. And when Mr. Oppenheim, I think, showed the windrows going east to west, that's the exact area where if you're a farmer, you know you put your furrows against the runoff. This is in the runoff. So now when it runs off, it's going right down into the train or railroad company's property. And I don't think there's going to be any monitoring there. The other thing is, I did call Fish and Wildlife today and I did see that they have not responded in the file, but there was an outstanding encroachment situation for many, many people on Cloverfield Way back in 2006, I believe, when everybody had moved over onto Mr. Stengel's property, which is the piece that goes along the northern edge of Mr. Cavosa's all the way to proprietor's way. And they were all given a letter to remove whatever encroachment on these properties. The only one left is Mr. Cavosa, who, if you look at an aerial, much of his work that he's doing, piling of stones and debris, is on the government's property, the Commonwealth, the mass fish and wildlife. So I just want to bring those, that's just for the site plan. So that would be nice to have all those features on the site plan. And when you all sort of talking about butters, it would be nice to maybe show a distance so people realize that this just isn't this glamorous little piece of land and nobody exists around it, because that's how it's been portrayed, that there are no people here. And there are a lot of people there. I think all the questions were answered in the, in my first line of questions. The next ones I have are, and I'm sorry to hold everybody up. There was never any outreach to the neighbors and I think that's disingenuous. Some people were very enamored and supporting this, but I think it would have been nice that maybe some of this was hashed out amongst the neighbors with the applicant. And there was also no outreach to the solid waste committee and their take on this situation because they are in the middle of waiting for a report from the Cape Cod Commission on what we're going, meaning all the surrounding towns, with the old transfer station. And one of the options that the Cape Cod Commission and the towns have been discussing is that that become a composting facility. So it could be that this, if we wait till June at least, if this special permit is awarded, at least wait till June so that we can find out what that report says. And this might be a place where Mr. Cavosa could become partnerships and it goes where in a very appropriate place, which is out on Otis Air Force Base and not in densely When we talk about the powers of the board and the powers of the planning, I know the building commissioner, there have been many infractions on this property. And we have tailored, not we, you, this board, has allowed, when there's been an infraction, to re, to make a new law, basically. So if you do something bad, you're rewarded for the bad behavior by getting that to be allowed now. And I don't think that is the way it should work. And that's just in my world. I don't know about other people. And I just want to know how this board, if the odor does become a problem, how do we amend that special permit? Because we've done it by just saying you can add more trucks because you had those trucks there. You can add this because you had that. And I don't know how we're going to do that. And I, along with this attorney, I have read documents after documents and the odor is the big issue. The vector is a second big issue. The seagulls this morning on 151, when they were loading whatever on the site, it looked like the town, the Bourne landfill. So we're going to get, we don't only get the four-legged vector, but we get crows, we get seagulls, we get maggots, we get flies. I mean, it's intense. And I don't know if any of you have been to any of these composting facilities. I went down to Dartmouth and I saw one. And I was quite impressed at how big it was and how much garbage was there. And even in this weather, with it being pretty well-controlled, how much it smelled. And the gentleman told me that the maggots get quite hardy and healthy by the end of summer. So I just think that this is not the appropriate place. You'll make that decision. I hope people in this, this audience will be indicating how much there is opposition here. And I did call the fire department and they, in their, in your file, I don't know if they've added something after today, but you know, this afternoon, they had not really given you any report. They just said, as of this point, we are not making a comment. So I think for the water and the fire, and it's nice that they can run down the road and get, you know, the engine out of North Falmouth, but this abuts 10,000 acres of wildlife and very flammable in August, which is when wood chips and bark mulch love to catch on fire. The guy in the loader flips his cigarette out, you've got crane wildlife on fire in the Otis Air Force Base, which they do have a fire department. So it's, it's just, in they, in those reports, when you read through them, they're, they're not that exciting, but the two places you do not cite one of these is next to a wildlife area and next to residence. And it's very interesting that Mr. Cavosa has planted the composting in the most closest proximity to people. And I just think if you were going to do that, why, it's almost, I don't know, it just isn't right. But thank you very much and we'll, I'm sure, have a continuance.
We will. Thank you, Maureen.
Ryan Mann, 109 Cloverfield Way. I have no basket tonight, but his grandmother came out from New York so that I could be here, so thank you. First of all, members of the planning board, I just want to thank you. I know you all are volunteers. It's a very late night for everybody here. You're here every two weeks and I very much appreciate that. I'm representing not only myself and my wife and my nine-month-old son tonight, but I'm really representing the entire Cloverfield neighborhood. I think it's really important to think about this from how Mr. Oppenheim's presentation was. He very clearly was, very good presentation. He very much clearly said that it abuts trees. And it does. 300 feet on the other side of that are homes. He mentioned, one of the things that he mentioned, what, the one thing that he didn't know if it mitigated or not mitigated, is there is an affordable house on that street. That affordable house, which has a family that may not be affordable, is going to be affected by this 500 feet. How many of you folks have been to one of these facilities? Okay. I've been to four in the last two weeks. All of them are cited on very large parcels, 1,000 acres, 2,000 acres, very large. They all smell. They all smell. You go down the roads in Dartmouth, you go down the roads in Westport, you go down the roads in Rehoboth, you go down the roads in Rhode Island, you go past these facilities, you know it, okay? 151 is not just a state highway. It's not just a thoroughfare to the fairgrounds. It is really the gateway to Falmouth, the gateway to Cape. Everybody that's going out to Cape from where we are goes 151. I mean, I guess you can go 28, but that's a lot more. I digress there. So everybody who's going to come through Falmouth, we're going to be the sneaky town because it's going to smell. It's going to smell. Every facility smells. Now, if we mitigate that, I guess if he's able to come up with some way in his, his engineering, which is, it's not rock and scientists supposedly, then it doesn't smell. Okay, he'd be the first. I spoke to one gentleman who basically was very clear and he said, I have flies all year round. There's no vector plan in this that talks about flies. No plan in the vector plan that talks about flies at all. The fire hydrant, speaking of butters, he didn't want to mention us when we were there in his plan, but conveniently, we have a fire hydrant. So we are there, we're actually part of this. There was a, the other thing that the attorney mentioned was about the DEP general permit, which is a check the box type of form. They are expecting the towns to come up with specific review requirements to really vet this properly. It's not, DEP says, yes, it's okay, therefore it's okay. It is the town's job to really vet it correctly and thoroughly. At the last meeting, there was an anonymous letter that was told we couldn't talk about that. I hope that whoever that anonymous letter was, that they would contact me, because I'll be your non-anonymous person, to talk about the drone. be your non-anonymous person, to talk about the drone that talked about uncovered garbage piles on the property already. Mr. Cavosa has a, a, what was it, 27 people working for him right now? There's probably 37 people working on the street of Cloverfield Way right now. Property owners pay taxes, non-employer, non-employees. We are property tax owners, and we deserve a say in this. The other part of the DEP permit that's really, really important to remember is the odor is not just, we deal with it. It says in the regulation, it cannot leave his property. Cannot leave his property. That's 75 feet, 10 feet, I don't know how far it is. Actually, again, it's 10 feet. 10 feet from his property. So can't leave that 10 feet. So we're not talking 2,500 feet, we're not talking 1,600 feet, we're not even talking 300 feet. It's not allowed to leave his property. How do we make sure that it doesn't leave his property? Do we put air testing in? I don't know. Maybe that could be something that the planning board could require. The other suggestion I was going to suggest to Mr. Cavosa and others who might think of this is there are new technologies, including digesters, that are much more efficient and much less odor-causing. The other thing, I, I thought it was very interesting, his piles in the summer are very large, and that is the time when we are going to have the most odor. So maybe there could be some restriction on the size of that to maybe a quarter of that size or less, if that is the case. Sorry, I'm looking. Oh. Finally, I, I just can say that there is no problem with Mr. Cavosa continuing his operation, as far as I'm concerned, for cardboard, for servicing his trucks. I want him to continue his business here just as much as everybody here, but his rights do not outweigh the rights of the homeowners on that. And I really do appreciate you thinking and thinking very carefully about this issue. One more thing I just remembered, and I apologize. DEP and the state did bring up a really, really great proposal for this organic waste thing. They've done other things that they've brought up in the past that they thought were great things. Something called a windmill, do we know about that? So let's make sure we think through this and think that it's right for Falmouth before we go and do it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
In the interest of not being repetitive, I just have one thing I'd like to point out.
Could you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Peg Nicholson, Ballymead resident. I quote a letter from Brian A. Curry, town planner, on the letterhead of the planning board, to Michael Palmer, town clerk, dated August 27, 2014, referencing the property at 210 Nathan Ellis Highway. And I quote, "Based on the weight of this evidence and as conditioned below, the operation of the contractor's yard will not have an adverse impact on a neighborhood predominantly residential in character," unquote. There are 22 homes in Summer Winds, 13 homes across the street from Summer Winds, communities right across from 28, a 31-acre parcel zone for senior living, a community of 22 homes in the Cloverfield Way neighborhood, 274 homes and 30 condominiums in Ballymead. Generally residential in character. I ask you to consider that when you look at this composting request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Pierceall from Cloverfield Way. Learned a lot tonight, and I kind of came in one way, I'm thinking, rude, but I learned a lot. I have no car. Family, wonderful family, does fantastic stuff for the town. Every kid in this school system has a shirt. He's part of donating, one of the sponsors for the No Guff Week at school. No problem with him. It's just this, remember when they're doing the wind, the windmills? Wow, it's a great thing. Maybe should have thought about it a little more, because not, not so good. I have eight acres on Cloverfield, and there's another parcel, only one other I know of that has five. Can we do this? I mean, where does it stop? Can we, we own, can we, I don't know. I just want to say, we've owned our property for 31 years, and pretty much everyone there is kind of around the same time. We all wanted a little sanctuary, a little place out in the country. And then my husband has worked to, his fingers to the bone, making a little oasis of heaven for us. We've lost two sons recently. We don't go anywhere. We don't go on vacations. Most people out there don't. We're farmers, little firms. We have 12 chickens. That's my, I don't even want to go to work. I don't want to go to movie. I just want to come, wherever I go, grocery store, I just want to get home. We have the most beautiful gardens, flowers, birds, and we like to sit out there. That's all we do. We have people over, we don't go places, and we have hummingbirds and flowers. And I'm sorry, but I don't think it's going to smell so good in the summer, and that's, you know, that's pretty much all we do. And I think about Ballymead, I know Carl lives there, and he doesn't want it to smell over there, and he has little kids, I'm sure. But I'm thinking the weddings over there, and people pay a lot of money to do golfing. And I'm just going to say, and I mean this not in a snippy way, really, but I think we need to think about it a little more, study it, go out, visit these places, for sure. My husband works near one in Dartmouth, and he said it's, he'll vomit every day, and he's 1,000 feet away from this. The, the fire hydrant on Cloverfield Way is way down a very steep hill. I'm not sure the fire department can even get to it. My son-in-law's a firefighter, he's discussed that possibility, but Carl, make a deal with me if this happens and if it goes through, and I mean this in a kind way.
But you really can't.
Okay, I'm going to ask anyone here, including the board, if I'm having a barbecue in the summer and I'm smelling the odors, I like everybody's number, and I will, we have Cloverfield parties all the time, I would love to invite anyone over to my house to see if you can really stand it. I like to hang my clothes out, I have my windows open, my husband has it, 20, it doesn't matter how cold it is, our windows are open. And I don't want to smell it. I don't like driving down the highway, going to Bourne, and whack. It's maybe not the place for it. Let's wait and, I don't know. I value his hardworking, and everybody deserves to make a living, but maybe not at the expense of, there's 14 houses on my street, maybe 50 people, but that's 50 people who really love where they live.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pierceall, for the kind words.
Come out there.
I know you do. I know you do. I've been in this community for 30-some-odd years. I came in front of this board 20 years ago with my friend in council, Ms. Oppenheim, and I sponsored the article to allow contractors' yards in agricultural zone property. There was no place for contractors. Every contractor that was in our community was on an agriculture zone property, maybe not legally or thought they were grandfathered. And I worked with this board, and Pat came onto that board sometime after the article got sponsored. The room was in the same condition at that time as it is today. And I asked the board at that time, as a young man, a much younger man than I am today, for the board's trust in me to allow my contractor's yard to go forward. I needed a place in our community to run my business. I've done that with the trust of this board for 20 years without one single complaint, not one. And when I sat in that room 20 years ago, people in this room talked about traffic, dust, odor, backup alarms, water runoff, the vernal pool that supposedly on my property got all vetted out, property line issues, you name it. In 20 years, not one person has come to me and said, this is a problem. Until this last meeting that we had in August, there was one written letter. I'd say that's a pretty good track record. I'm now asking the board to do a composting operation on my facility at my property, which I've done for 20 years. Granted, we haven't used the amount of food compost or food waste that we're now currently moving to. I understand that. But all's I'm asking for is the opportunity to do it. If it doesn't work, as Mrs. Pierceall stated, I don't want the odor at my house, I don't want it on my property, I don't want it in my neighbors' houses. I, I'm, I'm a reputable businessman. I service the golf club. I service CLSV. I service my neighbors. I don't want to cause a problem, but there are a lot of people here that are scared by the scare tactics that are put out there of 300,000 tons and hundreds of thousands of tons of compost. It's simply not going to happen. The bigger facilities that have food waste have already made arrangements to take their food waste. Some of them are going to pig farms. You know, the 31 acres across the street from me was looked at for that one purpose, a pig farm. Food waste going there and being put in a pig farm is going to cause a lot more problems than it being composted and controlled by a reputable operator. You know, so all, this, this process, I, I, you know, I think it's important to understand what the neighbors are concerned about, but to listen to, you know, everybody telling me, it's impossible, it's impossible, it's impossible. It's just simply not true. We've done it for 20 years, we've never had not one single complaint.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We are going to have to move on. And, you know, I'm going to tell all of you that this is going to be continued to next week, so you will get a chance again.
And they can give more written comments.
Pardon?
They can give more written comments as well.
Absolutely. We can have more written comments, and Mr. Oppenheim, I'm assuming is going to do the same thing he did this time, answer any questions in a written manner, and we will read it.
And we'll read it.
Yes. Yes, sir. Please state your name.
I'm Al Pierceall. I'm Kelly's husband, and I think I'm the only one in this room that knows anything really about composting. I worked at a comp, large compost facility in Dartmouth for over two years, recently. I just left. And I can tell you that it does smell. The guy that I worked for and his wife have a 328-acre farm. They always did leaves and wood chips and brush and stumps and stuff like that. That isn't a problem. I know he does, he does that over there, and it doesn't bother me. When I found out there was going to be food waste and seafood waste in particular, that's what really got me going. I've never been to one of these meetings, I'm not a good speaker, obviously, but I do know something about this subject. And I talked to my friend there in the farm yesterday for probably two hours. And I worked there for, like I said, for two years, more than two years. And he had to get a special permit to take in the food waste and the seafood waste from the DEP and the USDA, and both of those outfits pretty much wouldn't grant him the permit unless he went to Maine, him and his wife, and took a one-week course on composting. This was last year. He didn't want to go, but he did go, and he was glad he went, because he learned a lot. He learned, he thought he knew everything about composting food waste. He didn't know anything. One thing is, he told me yesterday, is he takes in food waste. He was taking in food waste. He has a pig farm there also. Some of the food waste, the pigs will not eat. So then what do you do with that stuff? I, I raise pigs. I know what they'll eat and what they won't eat. And the stuff, he's actually going to stop taking in food waste, other than the seafood waste, because it's building up, and it will not, he said, it will not compost in 90 days unless the leaves or the wood chips are run through a shredder to make everything finer so that it will aerate better. And every four to five days in the windrows, you've got to stick a thermometer in there that's like three or four feet long, which he does, to test the temperature. If the temperature goes up to 140 or 150 degrees, that, that windrow has to be aerated, turned, and that's when the smell is released. And believe me, when you start turning those windrows, there, there's no way to mitigate the smell. It, it comes out of it, it's just in there, you know? And then you cover it up, and what he told me is for every bucket load, he has a loader with a seven-yard bucket on it, for every load of food waste that goes into those windrows, you've got to have six to eight bucket loads of carbon, which is leaves, wood chips, grass clippings, and stuff like that. That's what works the compost. And if you don't have that volume, it doesn't get covered up and it doesn't work. The guy that I was working for there has a contract with the town of Dartmouth and the city of Fall River to take in all their leaves and brush and grass clippings, yard waste, just to, to process the amount of seafood waste and, and food waste that he takes in, the different types. He takes in a lot of stuff from ocean spray, cranberries, which doesn't smell very much. But the, the food waste, and particularly the seafood waste, when you mix that and you aerate that, and it, it, there's no way to mitigate it. You, you can't mitigate that smell. I, I worked there on that place for two years, and every time he turns that, I don't care where I am on that place, if I'm downwind from that where he's aerating, when he's turning, and you, you can smell it. Our, our road, Cloverfield, runs right out of here, right across here, straight down prevailing winds in the summertime are from the south-southwest, and that goes right up our road. His, his place is 328 acres. He lives there. So he's doing the best he can to try to keep from having that smell. He lives on that farm, so he's not going to, you know, he's doing what he had to do, the best way he can do it, to, to keep from having the odor, and it, it just isn't possible. The other thing that happens is what the lawyer for Ballymead said, is when it rains and you get a torrential rain, this juice oozes out of the piles. It's impossible not to, especially if you have a hard-packed surface underneath it. And that stuff really stinks. And what are you going to do with that when it, when it comes out of there? I mean, I, I know, I, he, he, again, that guy does the best he can with what he has, but there's always that juice that's coming out of those piles, sitting there. It, it's just part of the process. You know, the, the, you get a rain, like this time of the year, I could go in there and, and it's just standing water all over the place in there. And it just happens, you know, when, when you get a lot of rain. I don't begrudge Carl making a living at all. I, he's a hard worker, I'm a hard worker. I've never made a complaint on his place at all, not, not one. I mean, I listened to backup alarms, rock crushers, dump body, tailgate slamming. I never called, never, it doesn't bother me that much. I know he's trying to make a living, he does a pretty good job over there, I'm not worried about it. But this is like beyond, you know, you're just asking for too much, you know, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Okay. But please don't. This hearing will be continued until next week, the 28th, 6:30 Town Hall. And Mr. Oppenheim will answer any questions that have been brought up tonight, he's putting notes, and we will continue the hearing until that time. I thank all of you for coming.
Dan Scherr is trying to tell you something.
Pardon?
Dan's trying to get your attention.
Dan.
One question. With your written request, can we get answers to those two? If we write a question to you, can that go to... If we write a question to you, can that go to?
It certainly can be. Mr. Oppenheim can come in and look at the file and answer those questions. Yes? Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call, I think probably, a brief recess so that people who are here for Mr. Cavosa's hearing can leave and we can get on to the next hearing. Okay, folks, we're coming back into session now. And the next thing on the agenda is a discussion, the applicant Old Main LLC had a definitive plan slash special permit to create a 10-lot planned residential development at 96 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. Falmouth Engineering is the engineering firm. And I will remind you that the hearing has been closed, so there will not be any public comment. This is a discussion of the board, and hopefully we will be able to reach some conclusions on this. So I'm going to open it up for board members here to give discussions. And as you may or may not know, the board did a site visit today. Oh, can you send that down to Marlene, please? Comments from the board members, please? Do we have the plan here underneath all of this?
This one's up, and this one's up. There we go.
Okay. So, can I have some comments? Yes, Ralph?
All right, do we have a list of any waivers that they've asked for?
We do. Pat, if you want to continue, I'll find that for you. So was there anything else, Ralph, that you wanted?
Well, no, not yet, not.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Jim?
Well, going to the site, we heard a lot of testimony before about how, where the road was sighted that wasn't visible. And when I stood where the road was going in, I could see hundreds of yards in each direction, and that's what I came back from the site visit, from my own observation. It was different than testimony that I heard at other meetings. People said there wasn't. I could clearly see hundreds of yards.
Yeah, I agree. I noticed the same thing. In fact, this curb cut is directly opposite driveway at 93 Old Main. One question that someone asked the engineer about queuing up, how many cars can queue up? And I don't know, I live in a development that has one way out, and very seldom is there more than two cars. And I live in a development that's far greater in number of houses. There's probably 60, 70 houses in my subdevelopment in Hatchville. Very seldom do you find more than three cars that are queued up to get out onto 151. And that's also taking vehicles from Fox River Road. So I don't think the queuing up aspect is pertinent.
Did you find the waivers yet, Marlene?
I did.
Okay.
Section 305-30, street trees, and section 305-34, streetlights.
The streetlights, what was the first one?
Street trees.
Street trees.
Street trees.
Street trees and streetlights. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I feel like, I feel like that all the questions with regard to safety and access are resolved, and it seems like a suitable development in all respects. The only question that I had previously was the grid plan and whether or not the nine lots was correct. And I'd be interested if others feel that that's a concern. And also then, not knowing any better, I just thought, and I still think, that the open space bonus density was for contiguous conservation-type properties. I don't see that a school is that. Ms. Monahan pointed out that that's been done before. Being a newer board member, I don't have any knowledge of that. So if that is really the practice, then I'd be willing to consider it. I just didn't think that that was right. But I'd like to hear what you guys think about those two issues.
The two points that I brought up before, I do not believe that because of the density of the property and the location to the school and proximity deserves a bonus lot anyway. But in the guides, it says open space. Public school is not open space. That is not property that people can walk freely because it's made generally for the security of our children, so you can't classify that as open space. So in that respect, the bonus lot wouldn't be allowed anyway. The other one is lot, not lot, this is to discussion for the board, but as we saw today, you know, the wetlands are out there, and on the grid plan, it shows that the wetlands pull into the 50 feet of that particular lot grid. So as to eight lots, for sure, I see. The ninth lot is the one that I have a question with.
And just to make it clear for anybody who may be listening, a density bonus may only be allowed at the sole discretion of the planning board as part of the special permit process for a planned residential development if one A is found, and that is the proposed open space parcel abuts existing public open space and protected open space owned by a nonprofit land trust. So you're right, a school is not protected open space. So that would not qualify under our bylaws as applicable for a density bonus.
Just for discussion purposes, on the encroachment of this one point that we were looking at, I just want to bring to all the board members, the crane-specific or detailed plan we looked at, we allowed them to get three lots, and it was far worse than this little T corner when we looked at that subdivision. The roadways that they were doing to create it, which we approved, were pretty, threw wetlands, you know? The tide came in and out. So I think it's a small, little piece. If, as far as the open space, if that's correct, I have no argument. If the school can't be considered open space, it's a cut-and-dry issue.
So, could I ask, Marlene? Could you please explain the implication of the little bit of encroachment on the grid thing? Does that make any?
So, the dimensional standards under zoning are that the lot width has to maintain a minimum width of 50 feet at all points except for the corner. The lot area definition in the zoning bylaw is very clear that wetlands cannot count towards your area. The bylaw doesn't say that wetlands can't count towards your lot width. Our discussion of the lotio is that he looks at it equally, lot, the dimensional standards equally with the zoning bylaw. But the lot area is very clear that you can't count wetlands. The minimum lot width of 50 feet, it's unclear, it doesn't say that you can't count wet areas, but our discussion of the lotio is that he looks at it the same. So it's really, it's really, you know, it's a discrepancy in the zoning bylaw that you're treating one-dimensional requirement one way with regards to wetlands and the other-dimensional requirement a different way with regards to wetlands. So you need to, you need to decide.
Well, honestly, on the site visit today, it looked like pretty flat land, and it's not, to me, didn't look like a sensitive wetland area. Now, I'm sort of ignorant on that, but I just don't see the real significance of that little encroachment. That's been the accepted policy. I mean, I'm not an expert, I want to come along and change it.
Ken?
The thing that makes this one so unique since I've been on the board is I've never seen a subdivision of this density with this many access roads to make it. And they never intended to build all these. They were just trying to squeak it in to get as many properties on the piece of parcel as they could. That's where I have the issue. If I thought they were actually going to build this house and it was a part of it, I would say, well, maybe that isn't a concern for building an actual house on a property. But this is 100%, and as we know, it's next to a school, and the density is only to get as many properties on the property. It's not. So that's where I, you know, you've got to have the lots to be able to go for the cluster subdivision. I mean, but it's, that's just my opinion, so you guys are...
So they're asking for 10 lots, one of which is a bonus lot. And I think we like the idea of the planned residential subdivision because it does what we want. It preserves open space, and it congregates buildings in a village center. So that part of it is okay. Can't have the bonus lot according to the way the bylaw reads. And so that loses one of the lots, and now we're down to nine. And the question is, as Marlene said, we've kind of eh eh on that encroachment on the wetlands. And when we went out there today, the definition of how the wetlands are determined is, there's a specialist that's been called in who determines it by plants. And the determination of where the silt fence was, was 100 feet away from the determination of the wetland boundary. Anybody else have comments on that?
Looking at 24122, the purpose, F, the proposed development is consistent with all municipal comprehensive plans and objectives. And the proposed development site plan is designed in its space allocation proportions, orientation, material landscape, and other features, is produced a stable, desirable character, complementary, and integral with the site's natural features. I think it meets that criteria. And as far as scenic vistas being highlighted and deserved, it really wasn't, there was an existing house on that, on the street at one time.
At one time. Jim?
I think that this, the planned residential development is important for our town, and we've got to take a look at the overall town view, and I think we need to do this more often than not. And I'm ready to agree that the open space piece doesn't fit, according to other members here at the board, and I'm willing to go along with that. But I think based on the totality of the rest of the plan and what I saw on the site visit today, I think that, is it nine lots instead of 10?
Right.
I see that as being in the best interest of the town.
Other comments?
Yeah. What did you just say, Jim, as far as nine versus 10?
I agreed with Ken that the bonus lot that was brought up about this being open space contiguous with other open space doesn't qualify. Based on what Pat read and pointed out, what Ken said, and what I saw, I'm agreeing with him on that. So that is the 10th lot. I am saying that I like the idea of cluster zoning, and I think it's something we need to encourage in our town. And that's the part that I would move forward. So if we have to lose one, we lose one, we still do a cluster. Did I say it clear that time?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear your rationale between nine and 10. So you're agreeing with Ken.
I was agreeing with Ken, yeah.
So we're down to nine lots being permitted. We can disallow one more if we think that a little corner cut, because they're proving that they can actually get nine lots. the wettest part of the year, there was no wet there.
I agree, and I think that those lines are maybe a little bit arbitrary. And so I think that unless there's a specific rule in place that prohibits us allowing it, I'm inclined to allow it unless, unless it's not allowed.
Well, when you're saying it's a little bit loose, yes, because they're looking for wetlands plants, and where they see a wetland plant is where that bound is.
Well, what Marlene said is basically what you were just copying, that there is no rule that would disallow us from doing this.
Right.
If it was the property where the house was going to be, that would be a problem.
Yeah, they were driving, putting their roads.
It's our decision, so. So if the board's in agreement that that's not an issue, I would vote for the subdivision cluster with nine lots.
Nine lots, okay.
That's a consensus of the board.
And there was a problem brought up with the school being there and insufficient signage.
That's nothing to do with these people.
It has nothing to do with these people. And our, for safety, we look at sightline, and there's no problem there with sightline. It was great from where they're putting their roadway in. You can really see in either direction for quite some distance.
It's actually at the top of the crest.
Yeah.
The best possible location.
So is there anything else? I don't see a problem with waivers except if we want to look at street lighting.
Well, on that particular property, wouldn't the street lighting be right in the house next door?
Yeah, the way they're doing it.
I mean, that's, there's a house across the street, so wouldn't that impact them?
Yeah, the only way you could want lighting in there is if you have the little, by the driveway sort of thing, you know, the low.
You've got a property.
Yeah, that's right.
But then decide.
Or unless a developer wants to put it in as an amenity for that.
Do we need to see a plan with nine subdivisions before we make a vote?
I don't know, Marlene, do we?
You can condition it.
That we want to see it? Okay. I think it would be advisable if we did.
We, you would condition the approval. Any plan would have to be endorsed when you get a covenant, so it would have to be redrawn by that time. But you can make a decision with a condition.
That we see if you approve the plan that they send us.
No, you would approve it with conditional, you would approve it with the condition that the plan be drawn with nine lots and prepared for prequotation.
And we don't need to see it as it's redrawn then? Okay. Did you all hear? Ralph?
Yeah, you're talking about the waivers.
Well, no, no, we weren't. Actually, we had gone on to, do we need to see, if we approve nine lots, do we need to see the redrawn lots? And Marlene said, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can just approve it with the condition that it'd be a nine lot subdivision.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that, because we were, we were talking about the length of the cul-de-sac and what the rules, regs say, and also, I have in my notes that there would be a sidewalk on one side of the, of Cobblestone Lane. It's not depicted on here, but I just wanted to make sure that that's correct, because sidewalks are required. And along with streetlights, street trees and that kind of thing. There is a sidewalk on one side, right? Because it leads out to a sidewalk that's on that side of the old main road. So anyway.
And we can put that in our condition.
Yeah, but 500 feet, it's, in the streetlights, it says there would be at all, at the end of all cul-de-sacs, over 500 feet. We were just putting a scale on here, trying to figure out if you go to the end of the, if you go to the end of Cobblestone Lane, at the far end of the turnaround there, it looks like it's over 500 square feet, I mean, 500 linear feet. One, two, three, four, five, six, almost seven, eight times seven is 56. So it's at, right at 500 feet. So, you know, it makes sense to me that you might have at least one streetlight at the, at the turnaround down there.
Okay.
That's what it says here. Streetlights shall be required at the entrance of the subdivision, street intersections within the subdivision, and at the end of a cul-de-sac over 500 feet.
Okay. So, everybody like that one? A streetlight down at the end.
I agree.
Because otherwise, it's going to be rather dark in there.
Right. It is going to be rather dark in there. So.
So we want sidewalk?
Asking for a waiver for streetlights, I think, I don't think we're going to accept that.
Okay. So we want sidewalk, we want at least a streetlight down at the end.
It says at the entrance.
At the entrance and at the end, okay.
That's what it says.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I don't know, we haven't, we haven't really talked about a denitrification system for the cluster.
That is true, we haven't.
We required that at the Shamsee subdivision, and that was not near a, that was, that was not near a.
Coastal pond.
Coastal pond overlay district, I don't believe. I don't believe.
It's right next to Bourne's Pond.
It's right next to Bourne's Pond.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's that close?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I couldn't see it. Okay, well, maybe, maybe it is.
Yeah, this is a good bit away.
You're talking about nine Title V systems in a very small area here.
So you're talking about getting a package system for nine houses?
Yep.
And there is room to locate that over here, it looks like, and maintain nine lots.
Well, you recall the size of the one in the Shamsee area, that's quite small.
Right.
You don't need a whole lot of space. It seems to me like this, this open space area right in here, between lots nine and lots eight.
Well, except that is for drainage.
Yeah.
So you don't want that, because that's a drainage area.
I see, yeah, okay.
That's why I was looking over here where it says Assessor's Parcel 30.
Yep.
I mean, I think these are things that we should give back to the applicant, and I would like to see some of this. I would like to see the nine.
The nine lots.
Yeah, I'm not ready.
Instead of a package.
Yeah.
Plan.
You can't do that.
You can't.
No, you, you closed your hearing, you decided you had enough information to make a decision. So you have to make a decision.
We can condition it, though.
You can, you can do three things. You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can approve it with conditions. But you made the decision that when you closed the hearing, that you had all the information you needed.
And I asked about the denitrification early on, and I accepted Mr. Doriselli's explanation of the soil conditions and the location from the distance from the pond, and I let it go the rest of that.
Title V standards, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's why I never thought denitrification was going to come up at this point.
Okay.
I'd ship my sale loss.
I always liked that idea, but I did accept it at the time.
So, Title V systems. Streetlights, sidewalk.
Nine lots.
Nine lots. Is that good?
Yeah.
Are we all agreed?
I guess so.
So we'll write up a motion, and you'll have a decision at your next meeting.
Great. That'll be next week.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Still checking, huh?
I've been, I've been freezing for meetings before this. I'm creepy crawling.
It's my sock.
So if I went to the office and saw something, I could decide not to vote on the motion?
Of course.
That was what I was thinking.
Now I understand what you're...
Well, they may not have it written, it's, we could vote on that.
You can't talk about this.
No, I was just saying, it doesn't have to be made, correct? Plans don't have to be...
Okay, we're moving on. Potential planning board articles for November town meeting, building elevation, adaptation of velocity zones, and maximum height limits.
So, I know you're going to have a lot of questions about this, and we will have a meeting with the planning board and the building commissioner, because there's going to be a lot of interplay between the building code and kind of how the building code works with the zoning. But in a nutshell, what you're probably going to be asked to do at some point is consider your, essentially, your building height, how we measure building height in velocity zones. So right now, you measure building height based on, do you need to say something?
No, no, I'm listening, I'm waiting for you to say the points. Go ahead.
Okay, so right now, you measure building height based on kind of your average grade on the lot, by the four corners of the house, and you calculate it, essentially. So if there's a lot of slope on the lot, you even it out. Now, in velocity zones, so those are the areas that are impacted by wave action, essentially right on your shorelines. And the problem that people are going to be facing are insurance premiums, obviously, for flood insurance. And what is going to happen is that people are going to be asking for the ability to elevate. And in some cases, you know, we might have a base flood elevation of like 18 or 20 or 20-plus feet. So that, what that means is that in order to get them up to what the maps, the best available data we have right now, the maps are saying, in order to kind of, those lots will be 18 or 20-plus feet underwater in some of these scenarios. On top of that, there's what's called a freeboard, and that's BFE, base flood elevation, plus kind of some space, some breathing space. And right now, freeboard is two feet. That's something that you might want to consider having a more generous freeboard. But at the end of the day, what this means is that you have your, you have your building envelope available 35 feet, right, from zero to the ridge. Now, if, if you're elevating that, if you're eating up 20-plus feet with your pilings and your freeboard, you, you know, your, your envelope is squeezed. So what, what some communities are doing, Marshfield has done it in a very limited place, Westerly Rhode Island has done it, some other places, I mean, it's very common in, in the Low Country in North Carolina and South Carolina. But zero starts at BFE plus your freeboard, whatever that number is, whether it's two, three, or four. So what that means is that you don't start measuring, you don't start measuring at zero until your pilings and your freeboard. That's all free.
There's a classic example of this that I want to point out to everybody that I, that this new floodplain issue has done, and it's velocity, the west side of town is far more impacted in the velocity zone than the south side of town. So it, the velocity zones there, like here, it's 13 here. They have a velocity zone of 18 on Chappaquaite Road and Old Dock Road, plus two feet gets you to 20. You've got a ground level of 10. Their, their building permits that they're building houses right now, they're taking them up, the 10 feet. And then they're saying, if we accepted this, you add 35, you've got a 45-foot structure if you take it to the extreme. And that's why I think this is something that could change the look of our town. It's going to be hard, we've got to really take some time and understand this. This is a very complicated issue.
Or a 55-foot structure.
You could have 55 foot, 18 plus two is 20, that would be 55.
Right, it could, it could. No, well, the ground, yes, but generally, do you have a house that's in a velocity zone that's also at zero? Because it would be in the flood, it would be in the water. You know, I'm saying that these, right, it could be that way, but in practice, all practical, I'm giving you a specific house I know about that's being built, not a theoretical one, a specific one. There's a couple that are in velocity zones where it's 18, plus two gets you to 20. The average dimension going around the ground right now is 10, and that means they're coming up 10 feet to get out of it, to get to the 20 feet. And then you add 35 to that, so I'm getting to 45 on something that's real. But I guess you could take it to the extreme, it could be 50, I don't know, it's hard, it's a really difficult situation.
So now, let me understand this, that's already the practice?
No, so right now, the 35-foot is still in place.
Right, so we're getting squeezed.
So the pilings, the pilings are eating up that 35.
I understand, but you're saying that there's one now that's already 45 feet?
It could be. No, it's not 45 feet if this was passed. They're, they're losing the 10 feet.
Okay, excuse me.
I'm saying that they...
I thought you were talking about an existing house.
No, no, the existing house is already coming up, the 10, we're already getting the 18 feet plus two. It's already 20 feet above sea level, the base flood elevation.
So there's only one story, there's only one story.
They have to build a one-story house.
Right.
That's the current lot.
Right.
Now, the, the other issue is, that's, that's an example of new construction. The other issue is, can people move what they have up out of the way to adapt? So if you just, if the, not, we obviously are not encouraging people to build in these areas. But if your house is already there, can you take it up and exceed the 35 feet if you already have, if you already have a two-and-a-half story house? Can you, can you elevate what you have? That's, that's another question. Those are two different questions.
Right.
Very different questions. And that's why it will be important for you, you know, this is something you're going to have to spend a lot of time thinking about, but it's going to be really important for you to talk to the building commissioner to see how that interacts with the thresholds that we have for code improvements and everything. So right now, you know, if you reach a certain dollar amount or a certain percentage of amount of reconstruction, there are other things you have to do. So I'm not going to, you know, I don't want to speak for him, he's going to come and he wants to talk to you himself, rather than have me kind of play Chinese telephone with you. So it's, you know, it's really, it really is important that we, that we all understand this counts towards code upgrades, that doesn't count towards upgrades, this counts towards the building height limit, that doesn't count towards the building height limit. And so you'll have to understand how it'll work across different cases, both for a new house or an existing house that is, that is vulnerable and needs to be elevated. Or, or you would be asked to have it, you know, a homeowner might ask for it to be elevated.
And you get into a situation where you tear one down and build a new one to elevate it, how does that affect it if you only had a one-story building to begin with? Can you tear it down, put a two-story building on it? So there's another issue there, too.
When this is titled, potential planning board articles for November town meeting, When this is titled, potential planning board articles for November town meeting, I think, and this instance is going to be complex enough, it isn't going to be ready for November town meeting.
No, but.
But we need to start the discussion now and start heading to it.
Marlene, are there other areas that kind, I know you, you mentioned South Carolina. We all know what that looks like, but is there some kind of federal requirement or laws that are allowed, that is forcing this issue? That, that the local towns are saying, okay, we have to do this?
No, it's, it's, I mean, as you know, it's insurance-driven and we just, you know, we're, we have a hard time getting good information on what people are actually going to see and when these rate, when are these rates going to be kind of phased in and what the actual impact is going to be. So it's not, it's not, there, no, there's no federal law saying you have to do this. But it's going to be, you have a lot of houses, both in the V-zone and then the next, and then you have hundreds and hundreds of houses in the A-zone. And, you know, so V-zones are kind of the most at risk and then the A-zones are the next tier and you're going to have, you're going to have to respond in some, we're, we're going to have to respond in some thoughtful way to what people are going to be facing.
So when we're doing this, we're allowing a potential for them to do. As I'm understanding it, we're not saying you've got to do it.
No, you can't make anybody do this.
Right. So we're allowing them the potential which they don't have currently.
Well, I think it is the other fashion if you're, I, I've listened to some of the zoning issues and they talk about houses that are still under the thirty-five feet, but the neighbors are complaining that they don't like the size, size of the structure because they're dominating and will give shadows. If you come up even higher, that's, the neighbors have issues with it too. I mean, I, I think that's, changes the look of the town.
And I hope people aren't going to get their hopes up about just taking their house and raising it up because that's most likely not going to work in most cases because.
Financially too.
You're, you're going to trigger that fifty percent threshold where you have to bring the whole house up to code, which means a whole retrofit of the house and it's, it's not going to be practical. So people with two-story houses that need to raise it up eighteen feet, it's not going to work.
And that's why, and that's why, before we start writing anything, we're, we're going to talk to the building commissioner about that.
Could we also get a listing from the assessors' office on how many properties this might affect? Just so we have a, I, I'm thinking of the impact of, you know, tax rate and things like that, if people start abandoning property because they can't afford to move up or.
I don't think, I don't think it's something that the assessors have, but we can, we can, we can give you a fairly accurate estimate using the GIS layers so we can overlay the V-zone and then kind of cut out the buildings. It's, I mean, it'll be an aggregate townwide. We don't, we won't necessarily be able to give it any specific one, but we have the maps.
You get a lot of flat roof houses with this, you know, this, this goes away, the traditional look of our homes goes away because there's ten feet, now it goes to this.
Yeah.
This is a conversation that we need to start.
Right, that's what this is about.
Yeah.
And get the public involved in it.
So the other one that's on the list here is amendment to the Marine District for lots without waterfrontage and you know that failed at town meeting.
Yeah, and it sounded like they were kind of tired of hearing it.
Yep.
So why are we going to?
What'd you say, Doug? I'm not hearing you.
I'm saying it sounded like town meeting was a little tired of hearing it two years in a row, trying to rezone that and now why we want to try it again?
Well, I, I heard a lot of misinformation come out. People talked about it was zoned, the Marine District was to protect the, the views of the harbor and all that. It wasn't. It was to prevent residences from going in there and preserving the marine trades and the marinas and the boat shops and all that. So there, there was some misinformation that was being passed around.
Yeah, there's a lot of exceptions in the Marine District. You know, you've got restaurants in there and the, we endorse this by, by recommending it in favor, but we didn't speak to it as a board. We didn't tell the town meeting members why we endorsed it. We didn't do that and, and we should have, but we left it up to the applicant to, to do that. And I think that, in my opinion, if we endorse something, then we should speak to it at some point. And I think, I think that if we, I, I'm, I would definitely be in favor of bringing this up again. We may be able to change the, make, make an additional change or something to it so that it's not just a redo of what, of what we, of what we, was turned down. I personally have a, a lot of things that I would like to speak in favor of it if we discuss, if we discuss it amongst ourselves and I would definitely be in favor of putting it in front of it. And I don't care if people think that it's been two times in a row or three times in a row because if you change something and make it better and it's for the benefit of the town, I think it's up to us to advocate for it.
Did the applicant pull the, the second one that was said they wanted to totally rezone it?
Yeah.
They did, that one didn't go.
They just let it go down.
This wasn't rezoning. This, this was.
No, 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 but he had a second article and I couldn't remember if he, if he, if he took it out.
He didn't bother to put a positive motion, just let it go down. He didn't really want that anymore. And I, can I just say one more thing about Ralph's point? I had someone after town meeting pull me aside and say that when they, that person was on the planning board, they used to always make a point that if they endorsed something, they would speak to it at town meeting and say why, just at least briefly, and I think that that was a good point, that we should make sure that we at least say something, why we did it.
Plus, if we bring it, if we bring it back again, it's our article, not a petition article. And that in itself should, it should convince the town to listen to what we have to say.
Okay.
Well, we can certainly discuss it and see.
Ted, is there any public comments on it?
No.
May not?
No.
No. This is just a discussion as to what we might bring up. But if we do bring it up, then yes, obviously, there would be public comments on it. So this is just throwing stuff at the wall and seeing what sticks at this point. And so the board seems to think that, yeah, it would be a good idea if we did bring it up. But I also recall, and I don't know except for Ralph, that anybody here was on the board at that time, that we did a harbor walk.
Yeah, I was on.
You were, okay. And.
A walk? Is that what you said?
Yeah, a walk.
Yeah, right. Let's do it in July.
Yeah, well, and decided that there were maybe certain things that we would like to see enhanced and.
We've talked about looking at our old zoning code. And we, this could be dealt with in that context. Take away the issue that, it could be something that needs to be fixed with many other things that need to be fixed.
And that's the point on this. It may not be from the perspective of just giving relief to three properties.
It's just inconsistent or it doesn't work.
Yeah. So the other thing though, that's not on here that we've talked about is accessory apartments.
Was what?
Accessory apartments.
Oh, yeah.
And I, and we had talked about potentially getting something ready for the fall.
Wasn't that coming up during the workshop with the, the next thing?
Yeah, but we had also brought up that we were going to do it separately because we thought it was something that could happen right away and didn't have to go through and we haven't done it yet. We brought it up as, I brought it up at least twice for a future agenda item. Everyone said, yeah, yeah, we should, but nothing's happened.
We haven't brought it up to talk about it now.
So I guess what we need to do is like, staff needs to bring a draft forward for discussion.
I think we need to have a little bit of a discussion before staff brings a draft forward.
Well, then we know, at least we'll know what we're talking about. I mean, or, or some specific examples or something.
Yeah, before the deadline.
Yeah.
Draft agenda would be a great idea and we could say, oops, you forgot something and then.
And we need to have public.
No, what Jim is talking about is a draft zoning bylaw. Right now, I'm talking, I think that's what you were referring to.
I want to have a discussion on it and having a draft bylaws. If there's another way to discuss it without a piece of paper in front of us, I'm in favor of that too. I just wanted.
We look at accessories, accessory apartments as it is now and we start looking at where we might want this because right now, accessory apartments are allowed all over town, but this is something different that we're talking about.
Or it's maybe a relaxation of the rules.
Right, allowing more.
Okay.
So is that a draft bylaw or not?
No, not at this point.
Semantics. I'm okay with it.
This item isn't on the agenda and if it's a future agenda item, we've actually jumped over the agenda.
Well, we were talking about potential planning board articles.
Okay, but we skipped over, we skipped over some of the other things on the agenda.
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't on the agenda, but this is a potential for the fall.
Okay, so that's part of the agenda we're working on is the future agenda items.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, no, it's planning board articles.
Town meeting articles.
Town meeting articles.
Town, town.
Potential planning board.
Right, right. But I'm just looking at upcoming housing workshop with Board of Selectmen. We haven't discussed.
We haven't yet, no. No, we're just.
Right. So we jumped over that to future, we jumped over general correspondence.
No.
Nope.
No, they were looking at adding this to the list of those potential planning.
For town meeting.
Third bullet.
As a third bullet.
Okay, but there is a third bullet there, that's what I was saying.
No, we're adding it as a potential fall town meeting.
Your discussion, your discussion topic is potential planning board articles for November town meeting.
Okay, so I thought I had.
And the apartment was one that we identified earlier.
Is there anything else that anybody thinks we might want to look at for a potential fall town meeting article at this point in time?
I think that apartment bylaws are one.
I think those are the big ones.
Yeah, at this point.
And we've discussed on our committee.
All right, are we getting to a deadline for that already? We just want to plan for it.
September, but there could be, I mean, there could be a lot of work in some of these, so we just need to know what you're, want us to do.
You know, as always, we're not going to put something forth before its time.
I just want to start.
Yeah, we need to start. Okay. Upcoming housing workshop with the Board of Selectmen, Brian and Marlene are looking mid-June to end of June, perhaps after the election. And it would be nice if we could have Judy Barrett here to continue the discussion beyond her original report and guide that discussion. Don't know whether it will happen or not, but it would be nice. But those right now, we're looking sometime mid to end of June for that joint meeting with the selectmen.
She's going to say, what have you done since I last was here?
So if you, if you could, if you could take a vote to have us formally ask the selectmen to look at their calendars, informally, they, they've been telling us that mid to late June sounds good for them. But if, if you want to formally vote, then we can, you know, formally request time on, on a Saturday for that.
This would be that broader workshop that we all seem to enjoy. It's a little bit less formal and we don't have a time constraint. It's not after everybody's tired after a full day of work. Yeah, that.
Can we assure that we'll at least get one discussion of our own prior to that?
Before that, yes.
And specifically with regard to that apartment bylaw that we wanted to look at?
Yes.
So this workshop is not going to be in the evening?
No, it'll be a Saturday, like we had before, Saturday morning.
Right, I, I, I think that we need to make sure that, that the Board of Selectmen have made some kind of a decision on the Affordable Housing Committee. They're, they're talking about changing the name. They haven't appointed people so that they can meet. They haven't taken another look at their mission statement. It's, it's, it's something in flux and it needs to be addressed and it can't be, it can't be pushed back any, any longer. Not if you're going to talk about housing when that committee is, is.
Is their point.
Is, is challenged to, to advise them about affordable housing. And yet they don't appoint enough people so that they can vote. And then they talk about wanting to change the name to, you know, something else and, and it just frustrates me from a community preservation committee point of view because we, we rely on information from organizations such as that when we make decisions about community housing from a CPC point of view.
As you know, we can't tell the selectmen.
I didn't say we're going to tell them what to do. I said, I think they need to know that it would be appropriate if they would consider doing something like that. I, I, I think it should be on the agenda of the workshop. That's my point.
Okay. But now I need a motion that we would like to request mid to end of June for this joint meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there's been an official vote been on that. General correspondents, folks, this is it, right here.
Yeah, that's not general correspondence.
Oh, it's not? Okay, we don't have any general court. This is all.
That's specific to your.
Specific, okay.
To your project.
I would suggest that you look through this. This is, I'm sorry, this is all Kavosa then here.
Yes, that's not general correspondence.
Do we have any general?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question about that. Will that always remain in the office?
Yes.
Okay, it won't leave the office so that we can go there anytime. I mean, anyone, any applicant or some person in the public is not, is not allowed to take that from the office?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And all these studies, well, we already talked about them. That's a different thing. They're all going to be in the file.
Yeah. We've got copies of all those. That's what I thought, since fall is in the year, then you have that for the file. So anybody can look at those too. Okay, folks, it's five minutes of ten. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, 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 aye.